Welcome to the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, August 18th at 6:30 PM. Call the meeting to order. This is a hybrid meeting, both virtually on Zoom and in person at Village Hall. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. We do have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted, so we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is the public's appearances section, the public's opportunity to speak. We welcome your inputs and appreciate the community's engagement. This is your only opportunity during tonight's meeting to share your comments, questions, or concerns with the board. It's not a forum for dialogue or debate. All comments will be noted where appropriate, either I'll follow up or village staff at a later time. And we ask that you please state your name, your address, and then each speaker is allotted up to three minutes to give your comments, and I think we'll utilize the countdown clock for the comments tonight.
Cindy, one comment. For some reason, I'm sure it'll get figured out here shortly, but I'm, the Wi-Fi is not connecting for me. So if someone else could pull up a timer for the three minutes, that'd be great.
If not, we can use a timer on my cellphone, and I will let you finish your thoughts. But because we do have a number of people that are interested in speaking tonight, we will ask you to keep it to three minutes. We will begin with individuals who have submitted a wish to speak form and are present at tonight's meeting. After those have been heard, we'll open the floor to anyone else who is in the audience, and then we'll ask anyone on Zoom if they're interested in giving public comments. And we'll make sure that everyone has their three minutes opportunity to give us comments. So we'll start with the wish to speak forms. So Bill Blaska is the first one I have here. We also, there's a little guy speaking on the microphone, so we want you to hit that button, so make it turn red, so that we can all hear you and the people on Zoom can hear you too. Perfect.
Bill Blaska, I'm in Lake Mills, 707 Cherokee Pass, Lake Mills. I'm for the ATV, ATV, UTVs here in the village. When state Wisconsin passed the statute 2333, they were allowing to use these roads. And it's common sense that the best place to be open is the villages, cities, and then towns, and then the county roads. But because of the low speed limit, the village and the cities is the most common sense. Dodge County, every single village and city in Dodge County and Jefferson County, every city, single village and city is open, except for Watertown. It's the only city. So all the other big cities and all county roads in both of those counties are open. In Columbia County, most of the county roads are open. I think they're going for all of them here now. I haven't heard of that pass yet, but, but most of the cities and villages in Columbia County and in Dane County, all the eastern townships are open and villages and cities. In the whole state, Wisconsin Dell is a big city, and that's open, it's been open, and it hasn't been no trouble. Actually, the whole state, I think last time I checked, there was over 20 counties in the whole state out of 72 that, that 100% of the county roads are open. So if county roads are good to go, the villages should be no problem. A club that I was in, our average age is 57, so these are not young people that are running these things. We recommend having the driver slices, and, and then you guys know that if something goes wrong, you know, you've got the right to take the ordinance away. If you opened up the villages, there's a problem with certain street, we can close that, or you guys can close that down, or if it's to be a problem, there hasn't been a problem in all, we've got like 45 town municipalities that are passed through the club that I was in already, and we haven't had any trouble in any of them that I know A lot of our club members used to be motorcycle people, and you know when you ride a motorcycle, you dress for the slide, not the ride. And going to a UTV, the people that want to enjoy being outside, the fresh air, they're going with four wheels, a roll cage, and seat belts, many, many times safer than a motorcycle. And nobody can argue that. And that's, that's why I think this is, these machines are, as long as you use the seat belts, they're, they're safe. There's another saying, with age comes a cage, and that's why a lot of, a lot of them are UTVs, ATV-ers. Most kids can't afford their UTVs, or they buy an ATV maybe, and they don't want to ride the roads, so you won't likely see these around town. They want to ride what they call the dirt.
That is three minutes, so I'm gonna have to cut you off there, I'm sorry. The next wish to speak form that I have is Casey Erlinson. Sorry if I said your last name wrong.
Casey Erlinson, 721 Crest Haven Drive. Good evening, trustees. I'm here tonight to make sure the board knows that village residents widely endorse the solar panel addition to the police station. I've spoken with dozens of neighbors near and far to me about recent board decisions, and there's growing disappointment in the village's rejections of smart growth and future investment, as well as a lack of discussion and transparency. Too many times, this board has spent dollars to save pennies, choosing the short-term cheapest options rather than the smarter, long-term solutions. The rejection of the sports complex at the last meeting is a prime example. That could have been half a million dollars in tax revenue each year, lowering the tax burden on residents, as well as reducing crime by providing a safe place for young people. Instead, it was shut down with no clear explanation and a refusal to look, even look at the information and studies prepared by village staff. More money wasted. The solar addition is the opposite kind of decision. It's not about pinching pennies today, it's about saving dollars tomorrow. Solar will reduce the station's operating costs year after year, provide energy resilience, and send a strong signal that the village is committed to smart, sustainable growth. I happen to work at Alliant Energy, and I've spoken with engineers who know about this. Solar energy is absolutely an investment that pays back. For a mere 3% to 4% extra cost, based on what I've seen on the agenda memo items, we can save the equivalent energy of over 20 homes each year and cut the station's energy bill almost in half. That's without even considering solar incentives that could provide us with yet more revenue. So I strongly urge you to not repeat past mistakes. Let's build a police station that reflects foresight and responsibility, one that saves taxpayers' money in the long run instead of locking us into higher costs. Regardless of the choice of the bid tonight, please approve the solar panel addition. Thank you.
Sarah Valencia.
Hi, guys, back again, in support of the police station. I gave my comments at the last meeting, but again, it came in so far under budget, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't say yes. For those of you who talk about fiscal responsibility and supporting our first responders, I'd love to see that in your vote tonight. And then, and as an aside, I want to say thank you to the police officers and public works who took care of a tree that fell down in our street this past weekend. They came in on Saturday, it was cleaned up even though it was raining and storming out, so I want to just share my gratitude for that. Thank you.
Right, the next one is JP. Villa Vicencio, did I get it right? Closer?
Closer. JP Villa Vicencio, 702 Willbridge Road. I am here to speak in favor of the police station. As Sarah just eloquently stated, it is $7 million under budget, and as we heard in previous board meetings, this will save space usage, in particular for public works in the near future. Additionally, as Casey mentioned, I really do want to echo his statements about solar, as well as additional, those incentives in there that will save us in the long term. So I really hope that you all take that into consideration with your vote today. Regarding the ATV, UTV discussion in there, one of the things that I hope is part of the conversation is public safety. One of the things that I did as part of this, I, one of the things I like to do is to go into research studies. And I found two natural case studies that happened, or more so population studies, that happened in the state of West Virginia, as well as Iowa, who recently passed state level ordinances regarding, or state law regarding ATV, UTV usage in the West Virginia, and Iowa allowed counties to do the same thing. Some did, some didn't, so it was a good kind of natural comparison between the two. In both instances, they saw a drastic increase of deaths and crashes for ATV, UTVs in there. So even though these have to share rules of road and et cetera, we're talking about 30, 40, 50% increase in fatalities due to ATV, UTV usage on public roads in there. So I've, I did share these studies with staff members, and I hope it's part of the discussion here moving forward. And then kind of last thing I want to talk about as part of the business development conversation as well, I know in previous board meetings, there are a few different discussions that I hope staff have the opportunity to present and that were outlined in the memo in the last board meeting. So in particular, I know there were a few concerns regarding location. One thing I want to remind you all about is the village board does not have the right or opportunity to dictate location when it comes to private kind of buildings and projects in there. That's where our comprehensive plan and our ordinances come into play, that's where we can say what is allowable in there. I know trustee Dahl, you stated in your response in the get out the votes with the exact definition of what's in the comp plan. One of the things I also want to remind you all about is that in our ordinances, we have other additional usages, conditional use. That's how Kids Safari, Oakstone, Dolphin Swim Academy, Jump Around are allowable in that industrial, planned industrial use area in there. If we stick to that exact definition that's in the comp plan, that section that you highlighted, those businesses wouldn't even be allowed in there. So already, that's why I hope for discussion that you take into consideration the current ordinances on hand. Regarding traffic, one of the things-
You are overtime, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
All right, well, thank you all.
Is there anyone else that, in the room that would like to speak?
I guess I've been met up with yous a lot. I, I want to thank yous for hearing us on the UTV. I'm here with the UTV ordinance. I especially want to thank Renee and Paula for getting it on the agenda. I guess it's been a month and a half ago, and I've been to the various committees, I went to the police committee, and I went to the public works committee, and as you all know, the results of them meetings, but I think we got to realize there's a lot of people in this room are for this, and I think they're very responsible people, and I think what you will have is this group of people, they'll, they'll police, they'll help you police this thing. I don't think they want to ruin it for themselves or anybody else, and I think if there's a bad player out there, I think you're going to see these people in this group step forward and take, and then with the shared road, I mentioned to the public works that there's like Vilas, for instance, I think that's one of the big concerns because of Bakken Park, but that, that road is 7.2 miles, I did measure that, long, and just a half, not even a half a mile that is affected by the village. So you're going to see UTV, the township is going to open up its portion of them roads. So you will see UTVs, you know, people, I, I, well, I'm a part-time employee with the parks department, and I mow Bakken Park every week, and there's a lot of cars that come in there from outside the district, and they leave back out, and they're running on them same roads that are in the township, that they could meet up with a UTV. So there is that potential yet regardless. And I just heard yesterday, a farmer told me, he lives in a multi, two, his road is divided with two townships, and the one township is, got an ordinance to allow them, and the other township does not. Well, his daughter was coming home, and she was on the side of the road that was not part of the ordinance, and she was picked up by a law enforcement officer, and he point-blank told her, well, you should ride on the wrong side of the road to stay on the permitted road. And you don't want to see something like that happen in, in the town of Cottage Grove. I know Vilas Road, one side of the road's gonna be fine, the other side ain't, and you don't want to see something like that. That's a hazard for everything going on out there, so I just would hope that you consider all that. And you can take this privilege away if it don't work, and then also, I think we mentioned at the public works, the signs, if there's signs, there are no costs to the village. And even if the village wants us to put them up, I know they'd have to have a post or whatever that would work out for that, but there would be no cost to the village to have this done. So it's, it's kind of a win-win. These people will come in and patronize the businesses, and it, and that's, I think that's a plus for the village, but other than that, I thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Thank you. Matt Hogan, 3784 West Juggo Road, the township. I'm also a DNR safety instructor, and just wanted to kind of touch on a few things. Mike did a great job. I just had a few other ones, kind of been to all the, or committee meetings, and listened to the, the points there, and just had a couple of mentions on those topics. One of the major ones, obviously pedestrian safety. I did reach out to the DNR in regards to this, and specifically Robin Miller, she's a rec warden with the Division of Public Safety, responded to me in regards of accidents involving pedestrians. And she said, per quote, "It is very, it's very rare to have a crash involving a pedestrian, even though we have thousands and thousands of miles of road routes open to wheelers. In the past five years, there have been 12 incidents involving a bystander," so somebody that wasn't in a machine, "and only one of those could be, was occurred on a roadway." And from what she said, it wasn't what I would consider a pedestrian accident. "I've never investigated a pedestrian injury or fatality related to wheelers, despite the crazy parades and large number of wheelers in her area." Another problem, or their point was congestion, specifically on Vilas, near Bakken Park. An ATV, UTV won't add to the congestion, it will replace a different vehicle with one that is much smaller. So I could drive my 8,000 pound pickup truck down Vilas Road without any concern, or I can drive my 1,900 pound, physically smaller UTV as well. So the smaller vehicles are going to be easier on the roads and such as well. Another big point was bus road, being the school area there. Just want to make clear that bus road is in no way essential for connectivity for anything else in the township, and it can be left on the unapproved list if desired. And then the riders in that area would still have full access via the other roads that connect the two. And then, as Mike had stated, no cost to the village for signage and stuff. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? There is, we do have Kim Hoffner, I'm sorry, I'm terrible with last names, is not a village resident, but is that, does not wish to speak, but is in favor of opening roads for AT, UTV, ATV, and they live in the neighborhood off of Vilas and can't get out currently without trailing their ATV, UTC township, and they're a township of Cottage Grove resident. Scott Listall at 4568 Vilas Road, not a village resident, but, and does not wish to speak, but would like to register in favor of the UTV, ATV agenda item. Stacy Listall at 4568 Vilas Road is a village resident, would not like to speak, and is registering in favor of the same ATV, UTV item. And Mike Anderson at 4982 Lotus Lane is not a village resident and doesn't, not wish to speak, but is in favor of the ATV, UTV agenda item. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak? You can put your hand up and we can call on you. I just want to verify that everyone has had their opportunity in the audience if they wish to speak, or if they'd like to fill out a form, they can still do so, and just to make sure everyone is being heard tonight. All right, with that, we will move on to discuss and consider the minutes of the village board meeting on August 4th, 2025. Those minutes are linked as a PDF in the agenda.
I just have one, I guess, question or modification under unfinished business 8B. It says there is no motion to reconsider this item. We never, we never considered it in the first place, so should we just say like this item was not discussed? Because the last minutes had something to that effect.
You could have something like no action was taken, or something along those lines.
I would move approval of the minutes with the change under 8B to say no action taken.
I'll second the motion. There's a motion by Seaver, and then a second by Murphy. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We're gonna move on to a lengthy unfinished business. The first is the discuss and consider the bid award for the police station project. So there are nine different attachments that are linked in the agenda here. Five through nine represent all of the bidder's information. We do have a bid review letter, so the first thing I'll do is ask Mike from Engbert Anderson to come up and have a seat at the front and kind of run us through that letter, as well as the second attachment, which is the solar memo. After Mike is done with his presentation, I'm gonna ask Rick to kind of give a summary on some of the legal guidance of acceptance of the lowest responsible bidder. The village board did receive kind of an email guidance that came out on Friday with some information, so I'd just like him to summarize that. Attachments three and four, then, I'm gonna ask Cam to kind of summarize the budget update and the post-bid costs, just to make sure that we have all of the information kind of explained to the public as well. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mike from Engbert Anderson, can run through the bid letter.
Thank you. Okay, as a summary, so we had on the 8th of August, we had an opening on Quest, we had five bidders, they all came in below budget, or anticipated, estimated cost at that point. So I'll just kind of review my letter a little bit. Basically, after we reviewed the five different contractors, we saw no irregularities within the documents that they had submitted on the bid opening itself. As a follow-up, we were asked by the, by the board to ask some additional questions that went out to all contractors. Would you like me to read them, or just kind of brief over them?
Why don't you just give, yeah, you can read them. Or not, I mean, you can tell us who they are, summarize them.
Okay, yeah. So basically, what we wanted to do was just find out a little bit more about the firms, find out, you know, how long they've been in business, what types of projects they have done, just a little bit background on how it relates on this project. So all five of them submitted packets back to us, and as suspected, they're all very reputable contractors, many that we knew as well, so we felt really comfortable with, on our side, with what they were submitting, and they would have been qualified bidders on all these projects as well. So then we looked at the budgets themselves. There was a little bit of a summary, we had, our last final CD estimate was about $17,260,000. By that, at that time, that included solar, and it also included the security and card readers, I should say card readers and cameras in there, which would eventually become owner furnished and contractor installed at that point. So we reduced that amount, so the number was about $16,510,000 is what we were really equivalent on their bids as well. So out of all the bids, there was about, it was very tight amongst all of them, there was about a $270,000 spread from the low bidder to the highest bidder at that point, and it reflected about $3.6 million underneath what our estimation was at that time. So to do some further analysis, we actually, I set up meetings with both Riley Construction and Pepper Construction as well, just to do a scope review. So there was a series of about 15 or 16 questions that I asked them, and the whole purpose was behind that is to make sure, without seeing their actual numbers, that they had everything that was inside the bid. Out of both of those interviews, I saw no reason to believe that everything wasn't in there, and again, the numbers with their tight spread kind of meant that they're all on the same page with that as well. So looking kind of as a final conclusion at that point, we felt very comfortable if you were to take the low bid without the alternate, that Pepper Construction would be a qualified bidder, or contractor. If you took with the solar, Riley would be also qualified at that point. And our final recommendation, based on a lot of factors and something, is that we recommend taking the solar at that point, but ultimately, that decision is yours. We created this as an alternate back then, because I knew cost was an issue through this whole process, and we wanted to make sure we are on par with that. Happily surprised that it came under, so ultimately, it is your decision at the end.
Rick, I'll let you, you send to us, if it's okay.
Sure. So because this is a public construction contract, the village, if it awards the bid, it has to take the lowest responsible bidder. So based on the due diligence that has been done, I guess, no information has come to light that would suggest anybody is an incompetent bidder. So if, like I said, if the project is awarded, we, for just the base bid, you would have to take the lowest responsible bidder, which I believe was Pepper, or if you go with the alternate one, I believe it was Riley. So that's in line with state law unless you find, unless there's facts in the record and you make an affirmative sort of finding that the bidders are incompetent and unable to perform the work that they'd be contracted to do.
And then Cam, I'll let you go over your memo.
Thank you. So this was kind of a long process, as I kind of noted, December 18th, 2023 was the first time FGM presented estimate to the village board. Again, that was a, two different scopes, the reduced scope at the 27,500, no, that's not exact, was established at that $23.2 million budget. So as you can see, all the bids plus alternate came back significantly lower than what was in the original budget. Enberg did put together a document that also showed the kind of, we have a construction component to this, as well as other soft costs and equipment. And so while we're focused on the construction and alternate cost tonight, I thought it was important to also kind of have a summary here on where the other costs are as part of the comprehensive project. So as you can see, Pepper Construction is the lowest without alternative one, and Riley Construction is the lowest with alternative one.
I'll open up the floor to questions from the board, knowing that we kind of have two decisions here. One, is the board interested in moving forward with the alternative one, the solar, and that kind of decides, you know what, who the responsible bidder is. But are there questions for Mike on the process, or what, on the results?
I prepped him for this. Can you walk us through what you put together in, in layman's terms, describe the solar payback for us, please?
Sure. Yeah, unfortunately, our engineers couldn't be here, so I would be playing that role today. But what we, what we did do is update this memorandum, so I believe we met back in February with the Sustainable Committee a while back, so this is kind of an excerpt from that that we used. But what we did put in here was the low bid for the solar at that point. So walking through there, I'm not going to get all the numbers right here, but in, basically, if you look at the simple payback period, which is about 10.6 years, so within, working with JDR, so basically, they have a model, and what that model represents is basically the amount of energy the building's going to use every year versus the amount of energy the solar panels will produce, but with the expectation that utility prices over the life increase, but the same amount of solar that you gain will decline somewhat as it goes, but not rapidly as much. So that's how it turns out to be, about 10.64 years.
And then we had further discussion today. So again, we're, these, these costs are being presented at gross, that the simple payback period does not factor in the approximate $10,000 Focus on Energy credit, or the approximately 20 to 30% IRA credit that we can apply for. So that is not factored into what is in the packet. I think you have an exact number, 10,860 or something like that.
Yeah, it was $50 a kilowatt, which came out to be about 10,860 for Focus on Energy.
Yeah, I guess that was one of my questions. As, as far as the NPV, you know, I'm obviously looking at the numbers here, and the incentives are key. Without the incentives, the payback really is, is a negative NPV. Without the incentives, the payback really is, is a negative NPV when I ran my NPV model. So I guess the question for you is, what concerns would you have, or what concerns exist on actually getting the thirty percent credit, the federal incentive, to offset this investment?
Well, and I haven't gone through that process yet, but, you know, getting that going, there is some upfront work that has to be done with that on the village's eyes to get there, and getting that sooner rather than later, as the incentive potentially has the threat of going away at that point. So I think getting it going now, if you were to do that, and looking into it and making sure that we get it on the books and start moving forward with that.
And I think too, the board needs to be comfortable with, before the One Beautiful Bill was passed, I could say with almost certainty that we would be getting something for the IRA after that pass and the change in reduction to the IRA. While I believe we should get about twenty, twenty to thirty percent, I just want the board to be ready that we may not actually be able to qualify based off of when construction starts and a couple other variables.
Are there additional state opportunities that still exist for mush markets?
I would want to work with Dane County further on that, but I'm sure there are other opportunities, especially if we won't qualify for the federal level.
I was just in a recent meeting with a solar contractor who talked about commercial projects, and what he was hearing was twenty twenty-seven. So I think there's a good opportunity for that to happen for us, and I guess I would say I'm for solar. I'm glad the project came in under bid. I think that gives us some room to add this on, so I would advocate for that.
I mean, I agree. I think that this aligns with our village values. It's aligned with our previous sustainability goals, and I know that those are kind of actively being revised in the Public Works Sustainability Committee. The payback is ten years. There's obviously additional incentives that we can go after, and being this far under budget with the current bids, the way they are, I would advocate for adding solar back in and taking alternative one as the bid, with alternative one.
I think the incentives are required to get to that ten-year payback, because the straight linear payback is sixteen. I mean, I'm in favor for the solar. I'm an electrical engineer by education. I mean, I'm absolutely for it, but again, I'm a finance guy in practice, and so the numbers make a lot of sense for myself as well as taxpayers. So I think as I've looked, as long as construction begins before July of next year, we'll still qualify for the federal incentives, per the conversation you and I had earlier today. Cam?
And yes, there's, the way it reads, there's a lot of caveats too. So like, there's certain reductions that the IRA mentioned, so was this portion of the project financed with debt? Was domestic contact content used? And, and so while, when we were originally looking at this, Enberg came up with thirty percent, I came up with forty, based off of what, I think we're gonna be closer to thirty, but I do want the board being comfortable with, if we get nothing, that has to be thought about as well, and I'll do everything in my power to make sure it's done.
Chris?
Do you know the, excuse me, do you know the tax impact of sixteen point two seven million?
Yes. So if you look, and I don't want to point into the Budget Review Committee's discussions tomorrow, but there is an attachment in the Budget Review Committee. So if you're looking at that as a resident, we're looking at all the values that are presented there at a fair market value. So if our average assessed home is three hundred and fifteen thousand, the average fair market value home would be approximately, I think, four fifty. So when I did the last math, that had a gross impact of about two hundred and seventy dollars year one, which would be twenty twenty-seven, and then kind of dips down pretty significantly each year after that. When you factor in operating costs to operate the building, that's another about thirty to thirty-five dollars a year. What was a little difficult on the operating side, without knowing what solar and geothermal fixtures were, I haven't gotten, kind of honed in on that exact number. So we were, we're sitting about at that three hundred dollars, kind of what was previously discussed the first year, but then significantly, because it's significantly less debt, Greg and I layered it in a way where it would be kind of paid off. We'd pay a little bit more on the front end of the schedule to make sure that we're paying a little bit less interest on the, on the, the front, the back end. What I didn't factor in on the, in the Budget Review Packet for the Financial Management Plan was any of the credits. So there's approximately, there's approximately forty percent of the geothermal, because of the way that the bids were provided. I don't have the exact dollar amount of those components, but we had estimated that, I think, in the original documents, at like two forty-two, two hundred and forty-two thousand, and then we had another approximately a hundred and sixty-ish thousand for, for solar. So long answer, gross around sixty, or sorry, gross is around the three hundred dollar impact starting in twenty twenty-seven.
Are there any other questions for Mike or Cameron?
Just had one other question on the solar. So is it kind of a, you said it was built in, the energy costs increasing, but, you know, then the efficiency of collection might go down, so those might cross list. But I was reading about, you know, energy prices increasing recently, and like, pretty drastically in some areas, with the cost of natural gas going up, and then also, like, AI data centers utilizing a lot of electricity, and so that, that might cause electricity prices to go up. So do you, I know it's hard to predict, and you weren't the person that, like, do you think that those types of like, energy, like, cost expenses were like, truly factored in, or hard to tell?
I can't be specific on that, but I'm guessing that their model, and Pete may know more about this, but I'm guessing on their model, they are taking historical increases in electricity and the rate hikes. So when the panels, you know, they will decline, but not at a, a hard rate. You know, they have about a lifespan of twenty-five years to them, maybe twenty-five to thirty years, so, but the prices are the, what they're factoring is, is that the rate increases are going up higher. So the amount of solar that you're actually generating every year relatively stays the same, but your prices are going higher, so therefore, you're offsetting it more at that point.
And just from an electricity perspective, electric companies operate very similar in water and sewer, and that's all cost recovery. And so while what we're seeing is we saw a big increase from twenty-four to twenty-five, utilities are just starting to feel the effect of inflation as they're going through rate cases with the PSC. I am expecting, at least from an internal budget perspective, increases in our electric usage for all other village services. So where historicals probably have been between one and two percent, I think it's probably safe to say three or four percent kind of here going forward.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I feel like there is an appetite from this board to include the solar alternative one option, which would put our lowest responsible bidder at the Riley Construction Company Incorporated.
You want a motion?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Move approval of the bid, including solar to Riley Construction.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Severson and a second by Buenzo. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm gonna say this for hopefully the last time. I'm grateful that it's seven million dollars under budget. I think that's really good. I have no problem with the solar in general, but I'm still not super comfortable with the cost. I know we need, I know we need the space, and I'd be supportive of a lower cost, but I still think the design is overindulgent, and I think it could be done cheaper, not cheaper, but we could reduce costs. So I'm gonna vote no, just because I'm, I'm still not comfortable, two, three hundred dollars a year adding to the tax base.
I just wanna say thank you, Mike, for all the, you know, the heavy lift that this board put on you, I feel like, and myself very much included. You took a lot of time to explain, and same to Chief, and I know that you both worked very hard in explaining to us all of the details and what goes into a police station, and yes, this is a, a big investment and a much needed investment, and so I really appreciate the time that you put into all of it. And same thing, and it goes out to all the staff too. Thank you very much. So there is a motion and second on, on the table, so I think we'll do a roll call vote, please, Lisa.
Benzo?
Aye.
Dull?
Aye.
Cal Nelson?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
And Stoa?
No.
Right, motion passes. We will move on to perhaps the main event of the night, given the crowd and the audience. Discuss and Consider the ATV, UTV Usage on Village Roadways, shared with the town of Cottage Grove. So there are five different attachments in the agenda tonight. The first is a PDF summary memo from both the Law Enforcement Committee and Public Works, where there's, we can have a little bit of discussion on what was discussed at those meetings, and for reference, we discussed kind of preliminary discussion at the board level and sent it back to these two committees to have further discussion and then bring it back to us once again. There's an additional attachment of comparable municipalities. It was pointed out at LEC that the village of Wanakee was missing from this list, and they do have, allow ATVs, and it is at a ten mile per hour speed limit. The third attachment is the, is the township's ordinance, and I will, after we go through the summary memo, let Rick perhaps speak a little bit to what the village would also be looking for in an ordinance change. There's the Wisconsin ATV, UTV Regulations as Attachment Four, and then Attachment Five is the DNR-specific data for ATV, UTV crash graphs that was presented at LEC. Actually, first, I'll turn it over to trustee Buenzo. If you, this was your agenda item, I don't know if you have anything you want to say before kind of kicking it over to Chief and Kyla to kind of give their brief summaries of what happened in their meetings.
Yes. So I just want to add too, that the UTVs are already using half of the roads. We are looking at a group of responsible individuals who are licensed to have demonstrated that they will adhere to the laws and be respectful and are willing to abide by, if the village passes this, if this is not working out, then their, their rights will be removed. And I want to point out that just within Cottage Grove itself, we have these e-bikes and these scooters that are zipping around town, and they're not following the traffic laws. They're, so the UTVs are actually following the laws and they're safer, and I, I don't know the rates of accidents that have happened with these kids and younger people on these scooters zipping around, but I've seen them. They, they're, quite frankly, should be abiding by traffic laws, and they're not. I also want to point out that we're trying to bridge some gaps with the town, and it's really time that we start setting precedents for working together more. This is now not an outlandish request, and as far as research with Iowa and West Virginia, that shouldn't even be considered. We're in the state of Wisconsin. We had somebody from the DNR tonight discussing, there has not been any fatalities. This again is, you know, it's, it's individuals who are not zipping around town, they're not riding, you know, gearing these up to be Harleys and, and trying to tear up the town. So I would encourage the board members to support this.
All right. I know that Chief is on, I don't, and Kyla, if you want to just kind of maybe run through your portions of the memo and just kind of give us a summary of what happened at each of the committee meetings, or I can, I guess, Chris, actually, you chair both of those, don't you? I don't want to put you on the spot either. Who would like to be on the spot to discuss what happened?
I can discuss the vote. The vote in Law Enforcement Committee was two to two to one, so it left the committee with no recommendation, and that was for the, all four roads. The Public Works was four to three. The only thing to note of that is, it was, the discussion was around the effect of ATVs, UTVs on Public Works roads and things like that. It wasn't necessarily a vote on whether they thought it was a good idea or not. It was just solely focused on how it affects Public Works, and I think that's all I have to say about that.
I don't know if staff have anything that they want to add?
I don't have much to add on that. A lot of it came from the Law Enforcement Committee. Chief was at Public Works Committee and gave his debrief after the Law Enforcement Committee and their recommendation. Like Chris said, it was made very clear within our committee that the vote was based on public roadway, the use of ATVs and UTVs on public roadways, and the signage regarding that and how that would affect Public Works staff. While it has been mentioned in public comment regarding that signs would be, could be paid for and installed by the club, this has not yet officially came to the village staff in any way, shape or form, that this would be provided to us if this motion continues to move forward. It was recommended that it would not include bus road out of Public Works for this discussion item. Chief, I'll let you add if you have anything to add to it. You're on mute.
Good evening. Sorry bouncing around on the screen. So out of LEC, obviously, one of the discussions was related to public safety. One of the things that you do have in your packet is the statistics from the Wisconsin DNR for ATV, UTV crashes, and literally, this is their annual report out, and as you can see, in all of fatalities in twenty twenty-four, there were seven fatal crash victims, were passengers. There was a total of forty fatalities in twenty twenty-four. Again, it's a ten-year perspective on the graph, the first one, so you can see where it's, it trended up significantly in twenty twenty-one, then it went down, and now it's starting to trend back up. As you talk about ATV, UTV crashes and injuries, again, excuse me, you can sort of see the trend. The trend is on an upward trend for injuries and, from crashes, with ninety-six victims being passengers. And again, the next, the, the nuts and bolts of it is truly, you see a trend upward that has not been spoken to or addressed of, is it because the roads are being opened up? Is it because there's more being utilized? Again, the clubs are very responsible, and they do stay, they try to stay within the legal requirements. They're trying to utilize their machines in a responsible way, but unfortunately, some of the statistics are showing that that's not always occurring, and I'm not saying that's the club operators. Excuse me. Again, when I was at LEC, it was just related to shared roads, not anything else in the village, and that's the, the presentation that was brought forward by trustee Benzo was just the shared roads and no other roadways.
So Chief had a question. Looking at that data, is that all on-road data, or is that inclusive of all ATV reports from the DNR?
That's inclusive of all ATV, UTV reports. I apologize, I, one of the documents that had been shared at LEC, I'm not finding, and I'm just trying to, I apologize that I'm not there in person. I had a family matter I had to attend to, but one of the, I did have statistics at LEC that addressed the use of alcohol crashes, and I apologize, that would have been in the LEC packet, because that also showed a correlation between how many crashes were related to those that were impaired.
There is a map of the. There is a map of the, the request in, at the end of attachment three, within the ordinance, and I just kind of wanted to, I guess for my own clarification, verify what roads exactly we are talking about. So we're talking about Coffey Town Road, coming off of N, Vilas Road, for the stretch that's in the village. But then Public Works kind of removed from their recommendation, Bus Road because of the school zone. I know we've had, I think we had that conversation, too.
Chief Gary, actually, not at LEC, but at Public Works, talked about the fact that the county, they can't cross BB. That, that was one of the reasons for removal of bus, because the county has this side that's open, but not that side. So they would be stopped, and shouldn't.
And then there's also the portion of Gaston that is read on that, too. So if you remove bus, you also, you also have to remove Gaston from the list.
Correct. Gaston and Vilas connect in the township. Further, what, east? Gaston Road and Vilas Road connect just east of Bus Road, just west of Bus Road, if I got my directions properly.
So there's two little segments on Gaston that we're talking about, right?
Yes, there's a portion of Gaston that's by N that would lead all the way then to Vilas, the areas that are in the town and the areas that are in the village, as Gaston Road switches depending on which side of the street you're on.
Okay, so if you lived in that subdivision?
With?
There's no roads. And you went out onto Gaston, you would need a shared road in order to continue to the west?
Yes.
To come back around, to be able to then?
To get to Vilas, to then, to get to Vilas, then you could go all the way down to Coffey Town and loop your way around.
But does Gaston Road need to be inclusive of both segments, or could it be the segment to the west is included and the segment to the east is not?
You, you would need all of Gaston, I believe, where the town and the, where the town and the village share the ride away.
But the west side, I'm sorry, the east side of Gaston Road, that little segment to N, you can't cross N anyway, right?
No, no. You wouldn't start it until you got to the township properties around Brown Thrush Trail.
So then we could include Gaston, but not bus?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is, you can't ride on BB or on N?
Correct.
Rick, do you want to talk a little bit about ordinance changes, what goes into it, what is needed from the village perspective? And I know that there's probably some changes that we would have that would be very different from the town.
Yeah, so tonight, we don't have an actual ordinance, so I guess we'd be looking for direction to put an ordinance together. I guess just a note on the actual ordinance itself, so there are some things in like the town's ordinance that might fall into a gray area, such as like the age restriction and the licensing requirement. It doesn't mean we can't include it, it's just, it's a gray area. So, you know, if somebody were to be cited for not having a license and they challenged it at their prosecution hearing and won, like that's sort of the, the effect of it. I can say it's very common to put those elements in these ordinances. A lot of communities that have opened up their roads have included these, so it's very common. But again, some of these elements just fall into a gray area. So if that's why you would be voting in favor of this tonight, just know that it's not 100% certain that it's something that we could feasibly put in the ordinance and defend it. But if we get direction tonight to move forward with this, we would put an ordinance together and bring it back for the board's consideration on these three roads, three roads. So Gaston, Coffey Town, and?
Vilas.
Vilas, sorry. Yep.
And then, I do have a question about speed limits on these roads. What is the current speed? Do, I don't know if anyone knows this offhand. The current speed limit of Gaston, I think bus is 25, but maybe, I guess we're maybe not talking about bus. Vilas is 25 within the village, Coffey Town is 25, but is Gaston 45?
I think Gaston in the village is 35, and then it does go to 45 within the town. Vilas, I know when you're coming from the south is 45, and then you hit village and it goes to 35, and then it goes to village again is 25 north of there. I don't drive on a daily basis, so I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. And Coffey Town, I think, is 45. Vilas is 45 north of the village limits. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yes.
Rick, is there any, excuse me again, like, does it change it at all if it's just like a one-year trial period? Can you write that into a ordinance, or?
We could, or it just sort of automatically terminates? That is something that we could do. If you wanted to say like, this is just a trial period for the upcoming year, we just have to remember then that it is no longer in effect, and we have to remove all the signs after a year unless we take affirmative action to make it a permanent ordinance.
Rick, can we go back to the age and licensing requirements? So that's something we wouldn't be able to enforce if we were?
We, so we could, we could write it into the ordinance. It falls into a gray area, though. So the state statutes on opening up your roads to ATVs, they're supposed to be in strict conformity with the, the state requirements. So the, I guess the actual statute doesn't say anything about those types of restrictions, so that's why it just falls into a gray area.
I'd like to point out, just from a general traffic, we have many individuals in a motor vehicle that are unlicensed and speed as well.
And so, back to the state statutes then. So you can be 12 years old and get a license, is that correct? A certificate to drive? I mean, that's what I was reading on with DNR, is that?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but the, as far as like imposing the age restriction and the licensing requirements for operating on village roads, again, that's not something specifically addressed on the ATV routes statute for the village. So again, it just falls into a gray area where we have an argument that it's something that we could do, but it, again, it's not 100% certainty.
Sure, thanks, Rick. I mean, there has been a lot of press releases coming out from the DNR recently about, there's been 25 lives lost in ATV, UTV crashes so far this year. And I know that there are, you know, many responsible users, or we do have like safety concerns on a couple of these roads already, so adding in, you know, I'm concerned about adding in another factor. The DNR's data also said that 69% of crashes occurred on public highways and road routes. So of those, you know, crash is increasing, and nearly 70% of them occur on public highways and road routes. So those are just things that, you know, I know that there are many responsible drivers, but it's our job to like protect the general public safety. So, you know, that's where I'm kind of conflicting on, on these things.
I want to add that in Wisconsin, you have to be 16 in order to be licensed to operate a UTV. And Heidi, your concern is very valid about general highway and safety, but again, I'm going to circle back around. We, you know, we can't control all of the traffic that goes through our village because we do have other motor vehicles that people are speeding, they're drinking and driving. So as much as I don't want to see that, and with the UTVs, I would be interested to know the, the ratio or the rates of accident deaths versus regular motor vehicles is, what are the proportions?
So I have one more follow-up question. Maybe Lieutenant Wagner or Chief Gary could help me answer, Rick, even, about DUIs and drunk driving with UTVs. I think we touched on this earlier, that you're, you can get a citation from the DNR, but it doesn't affect your driver's license. And so, you know, that's the difference, I guess, when you pick up, you know, an OWI in a motor, like a, you know, a vehicle, a car, truck, that that's kind of a difference in those requirements, and that's state law, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Chief Gary, maybe you can, yeah, speak to that.
So, again, if the village were to proceed with ordinance to allow ATV, UTVs, in the process of creating this ordinance, we'd be adopting DNR regulations under statute 23. DNR violations do not count against driver's license, nor do they require driver's license. They do require safety certificates and things of that. So an example is, say someone is arrested for operating ATV, UTV while under the influence, they would get DNR citation. It could be processed through municipal court. The penalties then are assessed against their DNR permits or licenses, i.e. it has an impact on their fishing and hunting. It does not have any impact on their driver's license to operate on the roadway in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
I think I, coming from a public safety standpoint, I am, I'm not in favor of adopting an ordinance in the village. I do understand that there is a need for connectivity, though, and I'm, this maybe is a completely off-the-wall comment, but is there a way to kind of hand over Coffey Town so that ATVs can use just that portion and they can connect from the east and west and continue on their way without having a village-specific ordinance? And is there any wiggle room there? Otherwise, I, I'm not, for a variety of reasons, and I spoke at LEC, too, about my reasons why, but primarily public safety, I'm not in favor moving forward otherwise.
I don't think there'd be a way for us to like transfer enforcement of that road. I mean, so like sometimes with like county roads or state highways that run through municipalities, you can have a jurisdictional transfer, where even though it's like a, a state-owned highway, the village would be responsible for it. Or like with County BB, for some of that length, or for a lot of it, when it's in the village, it's under our jurisdiction. But with the town and village roads, it's a little different because they're very separate jurisdictions. So I, I don't think that we could do some sort of enforcement, like change of jurisdiction. Like we do sometimes road maintenance agreements, where it's just like we're taking maintenance responsibilities for this, but?
That's kind of what I was getting at, is we do some type of agreements to offer that.
I don't think we would be able to do that here, just because we're talking about like the jurisdiction of where your laws are applying, and like the town's laws just don't apply in the village.
You know, I understand the, this concern about operating under the influence. Could the ordinance be written such that if, if you're cited for operating under the influence, that you're no longer allowed to operate a UTV, ATV under this ordinance in the village?
I don't know offhand. My inclination would be probably not, just because we have to be in strict conformity with what the state statute says for opening our roads to ATVs. So whenever we put some sort of requirement on that, in addition to what the state law says that we have to do, that's where it falls into this gray area.
If I may. So I'm in support of this, and was both at LEC and Public Works. At LEC, you know, John Russell had made the motion for all four, and obviously, we tied. But I don't know if taking Bus Road out of the equation would have swayed the person who abstained. I totally hear the concerns. I think that there's probably room for compromise in this. So, you know, obviously, I think we've all said, let's take Bus Road off the table. I don't hear a lot of safety concerns necessarily about Gaston or Coffey Town. You know, it seems the area of concern is that strip in Vilas. And correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't we be able to set the speed limit for that section?
Yes, we could set a separate speed limit for the roads that are open for ATVs and UTVs.
So I think, you know, as, as a step forward in that regard, that then we lower the speed for that section of Vilas that there's concern about. I also looked to other municipalities, and we had data presented, but one of the biggest ones missing was the village of Wannakee, who allows ATVs in their village. And so, you know, I, I Googled and said, you know, are there ATV crashes in Wannakee, and didn't find anything. And so I think if Wannakee is doing something right, like that's something that we should look at, and we should also probably look at their ordinance. And I think they've just adopted the state statute, I could be wrong on that, but I think there is some room for forward movement on this. And so I guess that would be my direction, would be to staff to look at creating an ordinance that allows for ATV, UTV use on Coffey Town, Gaston, and Vilas with the, I guess, addition that we would lower the speed limit for that piece, as just kind of a step into this direction so that we can start making some connections. And again, you know, I worry about, for instance, you know, the people who are, are cutting through possibly on Vilas anyway, because it's just that little chunk there. And I'd rather have it be kind of kosher and measured and regulated than not. So that would be my, I don't know, motion, if we need a motion on this, or if this is a staff direction, but that's my thought.
I appreciate the, the thought of reducing the speed, and I want to point out, this is, again, an alternative form of transportation, just as we have bikers.
I guess I'd have a question for Chief. So obviously, you, you, you want traffic to flow, and reducing the speed, I understand the notion of trying to improve safety, but would, would there be concerns on having offsetting speeds that may not, you know, encourage flow and frustrate car drivers that are behind a slow-moving ATV, UTV, which would potentially lead to an incident?
Potentially, yes. I guess I'd have to ask Chief Kreitzman from Wannakee, since their ordinance says that their ATVs, UTVs can only go 10 miles per hour on any of whatever their route is. I could not find a map that showed their ATV, UTV streets, so I can touch base with him and try and see what feedback they've received in Wannakee.
I guess I still struggle with the Vilas Road and the safety and the traffic, all the, all the work that we've put in over the last handful of months on that stretch. And then as our, as our, in our comp plan, too, and as we look at how the village, you know, is expected to grow in the next upcoming decades, too, granted, that's decades away, I realize that. But as different housing developments come in, and I, I get, I get a little bit more concerned, too, about having traffic and safety, additional safety concerns.
Well, I was going to ask you about that, because, you know, I know there's a proposed annexation, or just a thought about it, Vilas and Coffey Town. And isn't that going to increase traffic down Vilas tremendously, right? Do I mean, like, so, I mean?
Right, so should, are, are we willing to add ATVs into the mix, too, I guess? And again, that is a build out of a subdivision that is likely going to take 10, 15-plus years to do, but yeah, there'll be additional traffic, there'll be additional road reconstruction, all the things that go with a growing community, too.
I guess I would, you know, just to kind of get this moving, I would make a motion. And my motion is to direct the village attorney and staff to draft an ordinance that would allow ATV, UTV usage on Coffey Town, Gaston, and Vilas, and restrict the speed on Vilas to 10 miles an hour.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Severson and a second by Benzo. We can do a roll call vote on this. Oh, sorry. Is there any more discussion on the motion as presented?
So I'm a little torn on this. I'm probably fine with Coffey
I'm probably fine with Coffey Town, I'm probably fine with Gaston, I think Bus is out. I have concerns over Vilas, mostly because there's no sidewalk or any walkway between Progress and Clark, so anybody walking on that is just walking on the gravel. So, if this motion's going to include Vilas, I don't think I'll vote for it. If it didn't, I probably would.
Okay, question for you. If this motion included, like, building a sidewalk to connect those two things, would you approve it?
I mean, it's kind of a hard, hard question because it's a, it's a financial decision. I don't know if that's something we can bring up at the moment. Rick, Matt, I don't, I mean, I would love to have, I would love to have one there.
I think that's a, that's a separate agenda item in a different meeting.
I think it's a separate project, so we would need a separate item for it to address it.
Okay, how about if I amend my motion to take Vilas Road out and to start just with Coffey Town and Gaston? Would you be amenable to the second?
I think I'd be okay with giving staff direction to draft that ordinance.
All right, I'm going to amend my motion to remove Vilas and just have Coffey Town and Gaston.
I have a question then, you know, let's just say a year from now, then we're revisiting safety and how this has been working by taking out Vilas and Gaston. Things are going great, could we re-add in Vilas?
Well, you can, yeah, do that at any point in time.
This is not like set in stone, you can add or subtract routes as more information becomes available.
Can you clarify your motion then, is if this is a temporary, like, staff direction to draft a temporary ordinance for a year?
I, I got the impression that we didn't necessarily want to put a time limit on it, so I was just going to say to draft an ordinance, because we can change the map and we can do that at any time, should, should we find that there's difficulty. The amendment to my motion was to remove Vilas as part of my motion, and I don't know if...
Will you still second that?
If the seconder would agree.
Yes, I would agree to that.
All right.
In order to get this passed.
Lisa, can you read that back to us?
Okay, more discussion. So, I guess the one concern I have, and I'm fine with in general, before we, we would move forward with talking about an ordinance that would be drafted, I would like to understand the safety issues with a 10 mile an hour vehicle versus a 40, 40 mile an hour vehicle on the roads in question. So, I'd ask Chief or, or someone on staff to take a look at what happened in Wannakee with those speed differentials, because if you're, if you're going down a road 45 miles an hour and you glance away and it happens, and there's a, there's a UTV, ATV going 10 miles an hour, I would be concerned about the overall safety of everybody involved.
So, are you suggesting we table till we have that information?
No, I think we can go ahead and draft it, whether that is included or not, I think needs to be a function of that investigation.
Yes, and my understanding was that 10 mile per hour was only for Vilas, so we would put the ordinance together for Gaston and Coffey Town without the reduced speed limit at this point in time, if I'm understanding the motion correctly.
I have one more question on the Gaston Road portion. It's just the western portion, not the eastern portion by Commerce Parkway and Highway End.
Lisa, can you please read that to us?
Sure, motion by Severson to direct village attorney and staff to draft an ordinance for ATV, UTV use on Coffey Town and Gaston Road, seconded by Benzo.
Is that accurate to both of you?
Just to clarify, there's Gaston Road and there's East Gaston Road, so East Gaston Road you'd have to cross and to get to Gaston Road, which you would not be able to do because it's not a shared roadway, so.
Yeah, and that's why I just said Gaston.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Benzo?
Aye.
Doll?
Aye.
Cal Nelson?
Nay.
Murphy?
Nay.
Severson?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so we will move on to unfinished business, see, discuss and consider, or just discuss, sorry, no consideration, Cottage Grove Fire Department Training at Village-owned Property at 101 East Cottage Grove Road. There's a presentation of training in, linked in the agenda, and Deputy Chief is here to kind of run us through the extensive training opportunities that exist at this property.
Hello, I brought Lance Severson with me too. He is recently promoted to Assistant Chief also. So, Lance primarily put together this PowerPoint presentation, I want to give him credit for doing that, so, he put a lot of work into it. So, I'm going to actually pass it over to him. If there's questions though, I will assist him in answering anything you guys throw at us about, about any plans that we may be able to pursue at this site, so.
I think he should come to the front so we can see him better.
Okay, here he comes. Okay.
Just because, while they're coming up, just want to give, from a village perspective, fire staff are here today to answer questions and present on what specific training they're doing. We have engaged a company to do the environmental review, we'll get that information back here relatively soon. We will be soft bidding the demolition costs and getting a timeline for official approval, but wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask the fire department, as well if Chief's still on and EMS is on, if there's any concerns or questions that they have leading up, just with that, where that intersection is. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Can you turn your microphone on, so the guy's speaking?
Yeah, so, like Assistant Chief April Hammond said, my name is Lance Severson, I am one of the Assistant Chiefs. As part of my purview of responsibilities, I oversee the train, training division. I was in our training division for about six years, and then stepped down from that. So, if you have questions, please ask them as I go, otherwise we'll get started. Maybe, if my computer wants to work with me here? Okay, so, our goal with the department is to provide the best services that we can to this constituents of Cottage Grove, as well as any citizen passing through. If you don't know the history of the fire department, we do service both interstates, Highway 12, and several roads in between, not to mention all the houses and businesses that are there. Our goal that we have always had was to save savable lives, property, and we try not to risk anything for the environment. If you don't know what that means, that means we're not going to save grass as much as we can. To provide that, we do quality training and we do education. We get all our education at MATC or other technical colleges, Madison College, excuse me, that's probably the renaming, sorry, I'm a little older, I went through MATC stuff, not Madison College. All of our courses that we get certified in are taught by state-certified instructors. We do have, on the fire department, we have instructors that are certified through the same courses that they do. I myself am a law, a certified law enforcement instructor. When I don't do this, I'm also a Dan County Deputy, I've been doing that for 17 years, but I've been with the fire department for 24. We do also provide training on monthly basis, the last two Tuesdays of every month, we go through and do required trainings, they have different topics, and it's always done by somebody who has a certified instructor or qualified to present that. So, why do we train? I covered that as the fact that we want to provide the best service that we can to this constituents of Cottage Grove and those passing through. So, training topics that we're going to use for the 101 East Cottage Grove Road, search and rescue operations, firefighter survival, rapid intervention teams, ventilation and ladders. So, if you've never heard of search and rescue, don't know what it is, we'll kind of go over a little touch base of everything. So, search and rescue training, it's basically what it sounds like, we're searching smoke-filled environments or just in an environment that isn't conducive for life, sustaining life. So, if there's like a hazardous material, CO, anything like that, we do searches and we search buildings, we search bedrooms, we search floors, houses, you name it, we teach people to search that house. We do practice rescuing people out of buildings, whether it be live people. Assistant Chief Hammond has been our training person, and we've actually took her down ladders before, so we do train with live people, not just training simulation dummies. The benefit of using a real house is that most of our firefighters have never seen the inside of this house, much like if we go to one of your residences, we're not sure what the floor plan of your house looks like. So, we teach people to search along walls, count windows, count doors, so if we need to get out in a fast and efficient manner, we can. And we teach them to do left, right-hand searches. This is a wider room, we would teach them to do an open search on this, spreading out. Searching with charged hose lines, uncharged hose lines, and even a rope. So, there's different ways that we can teach techniques to do that. And then, once we locate our downed victim, we can teach them how to extricate them out efficiently and safely. So, why is it important? Because we have a bunch of newer people who've never actually trained in a house. MATC has a burn tower that they use, but they get very limited training on that. So, we try and provide every chance, opportunity that we get to like, use a live house, we will use every opportunity to make our people better. If we were able to burn this house down, I would welcome it wholeheartedly, but that has a lot of challenges that would make it not, not beneficial for the people around it, and we would have to shut down roads for several hours. Just saying. So, it also, one of the other things is, if you've never worked in a high-stress environment, it teaches everybody to control their breathing. That's the one thing that like, when I stress, when I teach, is slow down your breathing, take a deep breath, because they get all excited, and teaching people to control their breathing. It's also one way, like I said, to teach how to remove people from a hazardous area. We have different techniques that we can use between one and two people carries, drags, or even downed firefighters. Firefighter survival, when I trained, I lived by the motto, "Everybody goes home." That's a tradition in the fire service, is that everybody makes it home at the end of the day. So, when we do firefighter survival, it's teaching disentanglements, if, where we are searching a room and we get caught up in the wiring from a drop ceiling, from the ceiling collapsing or anything like that, we teach people to self-extricate themselves out of that. Wall reaches are exactly what they sound like, punching a hole through a wall to get into another room that maybe is blocked, or we can't access it from another way. I would, if you guys want to watch something fun, come when we do anchoring and bailouts, because that's where we're jumping out of a window, I was just saying, jumping's probably a bad word, but we are diving out the window and sliding down a ladder from a second story. That's a fun day to watch because it's teaching that's the last moment of, you need to get out now. Anchoring to a wall and then bailing out with the rope or our webbing that we carry. I hope to never have to do that. I have yet in 24 years ever had to bail out, and I've been in some pretty intense fires. And above-grade and below-grade survival techniques. I've never had to hang out of a window, but it is possible. Sorry, I had to, I didn't realize that she added window hanging into this, so, if, that sounds exactly like it sounds like, so, hanging from a window and dropping down. So, Cottage Grove Fire used to be, I shouldn't say used to be, we are still one of several that have a rapid intervention team that will travel. We were one of the sought-after teams because we trained so hard. Rapid intervention team is where, it's for downed firefighters. If a building collapsed, anybody calls out a Mayday or anything like that, that team responds and goes directly working, trying to save the firefighters so everybody goes home. We use the tier concept, which is a team leader, extrication, air, and rope, it's a four-person team with one officer, and again, their sole responsibility is to provide rescue to the downed or trapped firefighters or firefighters. Controlling your emotion in that timeframe, because you don't know if it's one of your family members, like, everybody in that fire service is a family, so we all have responsibilities to make sure that everybody makes it out, everybody goes home. There are definitely some more advanced rescue techniques that come in through that with what they call a long, window elongations, which is where we cut, dig a saw and cut out the window, so we don't have to try and lift a firefighter who's my size out of a window, and stuff like that. Other things we're going to use it for is ventilation. Ventilation, there's different types, this is actually one of our, a picture of a training burn we did over off of Lud's Lane. These are our firefighters, they're actually cutting a hole in the roof so they can provide ventilation for when we actually burnt this house down. So, ventilation is the process of removing heat, smoke, and any unburned gases or noxious gases from the house or building or structure. There's vertical ventilation, which you saw there, is they're cutting a hole in the roof, then they smash the drywall underneath to create a chimney basically, so it vents up and out. There's also hydraulic ventilation, which is where you use a hose outlined through an opening in a fog pattern wide and creating big droplets, it pulls the air out. Or there's electric or mechanical, which is positive and negative, using fans. Laddering, laddering is the other thing that we need to always work on. There's different operations we can do from there, vice versa, of search and rescue to rid operations, to ventilation, and to give our people more experience climbing up onto a roof. That's another thing that we don't always get to train on. We use our building a lot to get up on roofs, but it's not pitched, it's flat, so it doesn't quite provide the same training. So, using a house or having a real structure to use for that is beneficial for us. Structural damage, so if we are allowed to use their, the building, simply put, yes, there is going to be some damage to the inside, there will be, at the end of this, we will ask that we will be cutting vent holes in the roof. If it's just going to get knocked down anyways, it's not going to be detrimental to you, but that's why we use the ventilation at the very end, that'll be one of our last trainings. It also will require rescues from ladders, where we'll take out a window, if we can pull it out without damaging it, we will, but if we don't, we're going to break it. Forcible entry, we'll use the interior doors for that, teach them how to use the tools to get through doors that are possibly locked, and stuff like that. You have my contact info, it's on the top there. If you have any questions or if you guys want to come see training or see what we do, reach out to us, we are happy to help, and we welcome you to come out and visit. So, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lance. Seems like a really good opportunity to use this, this building for some training. You know, I have a lot of questions, I just had one that's just kind of burning at me because, you know, I, not to have a pun, no pun intended, but when you're, when you're, you know, I, we have fall protection at my place of employment where that's really important. When you're cutting a hole in the roof and it's on fire, how do you know it's a stable surface, and how do you go about that? And how would you use this facility to try to use the techniques that you train for that particular activity?
So, when we're training for that, the first thing we do is we put a ladder up to the, to the, to the roof. The next thing we'll put up is we actually put up a roof ladder, it's a ladder that's got two hooks that are extendable, we'll slide that up to the peak, position it, pull it back down, before we even get off the ladder, that's to the roof. The first person, the first firefighter up there takes an axe or halogen, or some sort of a tool, and they actually will take the head of it and pound down on the structure of the roof, if it's weak, spongy, or not... If it's weak, spongy, or not solid, we won't go on it. And we'll move somewhere else and try to get to where we need to. Otherwise, the other thing we do have at our disposal is a 95-foot aerial ladder, which is our ladder one. So we can also teach to cut vent holes off of that. However, the positioning of where that would be is we would have to shut down at least one lane. So probably not going to be feasible unless it's approved by you guys that we can take one lane for that. But that would be how we prevent falling through the rows. And then we work off of that roof ladder as much as we can. There are tricks that we can do to extend how far over we can go. However, we try not to because you don't know what the roof conditions are like.
How many Tuesdays do you envision needing to accomplish the list of training that you have?
So we offer the same training. We try and offer the same training every month. So that way, because some people might not be able to make the third Tuesday, so they'll come to the fourth Tuesday. So I'm envisioning, I think we were thinking through possibly November.
There were seven listed in the original. A lot of this is going to be weather-dependent, how quickly we can get an agreement in place. And another question kind of that came up too, that I wanted to make sure got asked today was, obviously you guys respond with fairly large equipment. And I think you partially answered it with ladder, the comment on ladder one. Do you see any closures of the roads or kind of a tentative parking plan on where that equipment's going to be located during your training?
So the, we had actually, we've been talking about this. It would be, if it was a road closure, it'd be very temporary. It would just be for loading and unloading the equipment. And then we would move the truck off of the roadway so that way it's open. I was looking at the site today. I think we could get one of our trucks for sure into the driveway. So it's up off the road and we'll have our, some of our equipment there present. Otherwise, we're looking at possibly staging at the new tech parking, or the old new tech parking lot, or talking with Wisconsin Bank of Trust and seeing if we can put apparatus in their parking lot as well. It will be well after they're closed, so that's.
I do think we can get both the engine three and the squad in that driveway there along with probably car one, just kind of measuring it. We'll just have to, like Lance said, a quick stop to traffic so we can back into the driveway there and get it staged and parked. But I don't see us having to long-term shut down a lane in order to get parked in there. And then we'll be training in there and might have to take a third truck and park it across the street at the bank or in the parking lot, a few addresses down. So I don't see parking necessarily being an issue. And then as Cameron stated, we originally had hoped to maybe get it towards the end of August. But with some of the testing being done, I would anticipate if it all works out, possibly September and October. And then maybe planning for demolition in November. If that timeline works out with the village.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, my question is about communication. Because we'll, of course, want the community to know that this is a training and so then they're not alarmed, of course. And then also, you know, it's a sense of pride in our department that they're prepared for these types of emergencies and they're taking steps to be, you know, trained in real-life situations in a house, like you mentioned. And then also as recruiting, so people can like see you guys in action in a training. And I think that, you know, from youth up, you know, to see that, you know, the, you know, the training of the firefighters to be prepared for emergencies. So I think, you know, for all of those things, I think communication is key. So.
So we, I can, I can, so we have our P I O. When we were doing a, we discipline, which is like in the Village Water Movement, he'll send out an, like a Facebook post, at least it's how we're, the one way we can communicate with everybody is we'll say, "If you see the trucks around, it's not anything. We are actually doing training." We can do the same thing with that. Plus, we do also have signs that say firefighter, or fire training ahead. And if you so wish to have us put those out, we can. That's not a problem. It takes just a couple of minutes. It's a couple of fence posts and a zip tie or two. So, and we can at least have that as well so people know that it's training.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if our message boards are available, you know, we might be able to wrap those in also.
Heidi, I'd love for Inga too to partner with us on some social media posts or sharing our P I O's post if that's possible.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And again, I welcome anybody on the board. If you guys want to come out and watch, we can even walk you inside and show you what it's like inside when we smoke it up and so you can see what it looks like. Because we have a smoke machine that we can use as well to simulate smoke. It's just like a party fog machine, so it's okay to breathe, just so you're aware. But I would actually invite everybody, anybody that wants to come out and watch, see what we do.
So we can be the rescue dummy.
If you really want to.
What if nobody comes to get us?
Where, if you really want to, oh, wow.
No, I think my only concern was timeline to make sure that you had enough time to accomplish all of your trainings. And the timeline would work out with the village if we choose to demolish the building cost and all of the other information we need.
Timeline, timeline-wise, if we could have it for like two years, that'd be super awesome. But so typically, sometimes what happens is we get an acquired structure and somebody's like, "We want this burned down in two weeks." And then we're like, "Oh, no, we've got two weeks to train in this thing and we've got to slam out this training really fast." And that's really challenging for us. Two to three months is awesome. That gives us two to three months of training. Sometimes if we can get six months, that's really helpful. So if the village were to say to us, "You know what? We can't demolish this until next spring and you guys can train in it until then," we'll take advantage of it that long.
We will use it, I promise.
Yeah, we will keep using it. But if you say, "You know what? Our demolish date is this date," we will understand and say, you know, "We're going to use it until we can use it." So just now, like, we get acquired structures. We probably get two or three offers for acquired structures every year. Some of them work out for us, some of them don't. Some of them are terrible offers and some of them are super beneficial to us. This one is a great opportunity because of the type of training we have the ability to do in it. And the timeframe just happens to work out with our training schedule. If it doesn't work out timeline-wise, like say the testing comes back and doesn't work, this is training, we still have the ability to do in other locations within the community or within our fire station. So everything is flexible. We are totally adaptable. We're a pretty adaptable organization. So we'll appreciate it however it goes.
And if it doesn't work out, you still want to come down and see our training, I'll still invite you down because if we can still bring you in and show you what we have. So one other thing I just thought about and is like, I know in other areas of maybe in the town, because I always asked about security of the building or the structure. We do have the capability of changing the locks, so we have keys. So that way, and we will change them back. So that way, if you guys want to go in after we're done, that way it's all still secured. Nobody can get into it and there's no like liability on that. Or we try and mitigate the amount of liability that comes from that. So just to put other minds at ease and that's just things in my head, so.
So Cam, you were going to look into demo costs. Did you get a cost for demolition?
Our lovely attorneys recommended getting kind of like soft bidding because it is technically public construction, even though it's deconstruction. So I am working on getting that officially pushed out hopefully later this week. But just making sure we're following all the rules with that. I think when they originally went through the structure, there weren't any immediate concerns that were brought to our attention. But hopefully we avoid any asbestos or anything like that that would make it unable for them to be a part of.
The only other comment I would add is just, you know, it's a prominent corner. So I guess the one concern I guess I had was if people view it as like a nuisance property and like complaints and things like that. So that's one consideration for trying to do the training closer to the actual demo date. Because people, I've seen in other communities, like you'll get complaints, I guess, on the state of the property. And we're not going to write ourselves an ordinance, I guess, or like tell ourselves to fix it, but it's just another consideration.
And I think with proper communication, we can probably mitigate a lot of that ahead of time. So the plan is at the next board meeting to bring back the additional information so we can actually just have an agreement.
I hope. I mean, there's nothing on the agreement with the fire department or the inspection that I would think that would hold that up. The one possible thing I could see is demolition, how far from the last training date that they have. You know, if they're cutting into the exterior of the building, how long is the board comfortable with leaving it that way? So we're trying to time that out within a couple of days of them doing that, the holes in the structure. We'd actually have it demolished, is what we're targeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If you're going to bust down windows and cut holes in the roof, that should be the last training session. And then we should have a contractor lined up to get in and begin the demolition.
So.
We have the ability to board windows up after, like if we destroy windows in our first couple of months of training, we will board windows up. But I understand what Rick is saying about the optics of, like, someone might say that building looks terrible with its boarded-up windows and something like that. As far as cutting holes in the roofs, that's something we will always wait until the very last training to cut a hole in a roof because we understand the damage that that creates, especially in Wisconsin with weather here. So we planned not to do that until the very last training. But thinking through what Rick is saying about boarded-up windows, I can understand the complexity of that and the concern. And I think what the other board members are saying about communication is going to be really important that, hey, we're working with this house for a couple of months here and that this is just temporary. I understand that that might raise some flags, but hopefully we can work through some of that.
So next board meeting would be agreement with the fire department. Should the board want to continue to move forward with this agreement with the fire department to temporarily transfer the property, it would be approval of the demolition or demolition bid. And then acceptance of a tentative communication schedule. And then Inga and I will work together on seeing if there's some village resources we can throw at communication as well. We might be able to loop that into a fall communication letter.
Maybe with a little bit of how to become a firefighter, look at this website.
Absolutely.
We'll take it. Yeah, we'll take that. We'd appreciate it.
No board, no board action, just direction.
Yep, this is just direction tonight. Are there any more comments or any additional on this item? I think the burning question was the funniest thing of the night and I'm probably going to chuckle. So thank you so much for coming and giving that presentation. All right, moving on to unfinished business D. We have discussed and considered the Shady Grove Park improvements. So we have three attachments in the agenda here. There's a Shady Grove memo that goes over the project and then the two additional pieces that are linked. I know that Sean was online, is online. He's here. And so I think Cameron is also going to help. And I believe we also have, is it Blake Landscape Architect and Ty from Strand? Nope, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll kick it off. Just a quick overview on the memo. Back in October of '23, we started looking at this project. We met with the residents over there, invited them to our committee meeting, and we started to look at what they wanted out of their little five-baker park. When we put everything together for the first time, we came back and it was about almost $630,000. So last year's board decided that, well, let's give you $350,000 out of the park development fund. And we would have most likely had to have built that park in two phases. So kind of fast-forwarding to this year, early this year, Hayday, the Hayday development became more apparent. And while there was no parkland dedicated to that development, the village will receive about $473,000 in fee in lieu of parkland. Given that Shady Grove is the closest park to the Hayday development, it just seemed to fit to take some of that money and invest it into the Shady Grove Park. So in May of this year, we kind of looked at the project again. We wanted to look at the, evaluate the potential of completing it in one phase as opposed to two. Obviously, there's some cost savings involved in doing things in one phase, just mobilization and then not ripping up the park more than once. When we looked at it again, it came in about $53,000 cheaper. So we did a little smaller footprint on the playground and some overall reduction in construction costs. So ultimately, what we're hoping for tonight is that the board will allow us to dip into our park development funds just a little bit farther and do this park at one shot. Get it, get in there and get it done and then be done with the Shady Grove.
Cameron, do you want to speak a little bit to the?
So as Sean mentioned, there's still several lots left in the Shady Grove development. So there will still be some additional cost recovery. When we, as kind of Sean mentioned, when this project was originally discussed, there wasn't quite enough money that had been collected from Shady Grove to do the complete park. And so with, when we were doing the budget last year, with the uncertainty on what stages Hayday was at in their development, Sean and I came together and agreed that it did not make sense to, at least at that time, present a full concept of the park. And so now, to avoid double mobilization and design efforts, we're recommending that the funds come out of the park development fund. Shady Grove will continue to reimburse the unrestricted portions of the park development fees to the extent that there's available lots left. And then would be partially fronted by what would be collected from the Hayday development here.
Josh, do you want to run us through the playground documents?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about any of those specific that was attached. I want to reiterate kind of Sean and Cameron's thought is, you know, we've been looking at this the last couple of years with Blake also. And when funds were a little shorter, there was a thought of get in there and do something to kind of create something. But now that potentially there's funds, there may be as more funds available as Cameron was discussing. It just makes sense. You can imagine doing part of it or doing portions of it, restoring everything, growing some grass, and then a year later, come in while residents want to use it and add something later, whether that's a year, two, or three down the road. And overall, you're going to pay more in the long run. So the documents that were attached, there was an exhibit that was attached that just shows the overall layout and colored layout of the facility there. We're creating a sidewalk that kind of loops through the site, a gazebo. And I can share it if we want, as part of that, a playground and kind of a swing area with some benches and a water fountain and running electrical to the site. Things that may, some of those things may have had to wait till later. So it's kind of an all-in at the park there now the way it stands. And then we did have a cost estimate associated with it. And we're at about 90% design, so we can kind of refine the costs a lot more than what we were budgeting, you know, a year or two ago. So the costs feel pretty, pretty good at this point. And, you know, we're hoping that, we're being conservative also on that cost side, like we have been in the past, to make sure that Cameron and Sean have the budget that they need for the project. If there's any questions on either of those documents, I could answer those.
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen the layout. It was just, just seemed a little odd to me to have a drinking fountain in a shelter and not having the drinking fountain underneath or protected by the shelter. It was just sort of odd. Is there any reason why it was moved kind of off to the side like that?
Blake, I might need you on this one.
Yeah, Josh, I'm happy to take that. So actually, that was done intentionally. We often will locate drinking fountain and other amenities away from a shelter. So let's just say you had a birthday party or a gathering underneath the shelter and then someone, some other patron is using the park and wants to use that amenity. It's a little bit awkward sometimes if it's underneath the covered structure. So we usually will keep them separate.
And this, this sort of fountain would be more of that, the style that you would see out in the open, sort of fountain, you know, it's not something that would be under a shelter that have, you know, up against a building wall. This will be that kind of standalone kind of fixture associated with it. So it's a little bit different in that, in that sense. But yeah, that's a good, that's a good comment, Blake.
I think that this has been a project that is, a lot of the residents over there have been really looking forward to and have been wanting this. And I know that they were part of the tree form place structure, picking that out to begin with. And I'm sure they're very excited to have. And I'm sure they're very excited to have a full park that can be installed. And I know that the running community is rejoicing that there is a bubbler that is going to be over at that end of town because there is nothing when you go running. So that's also very exciting.
And I just add that we did talk about this at Parks and Rec Committee. A few months ago, there were a few tweaks that we asked Blake to kind of tweak after that discussion. So that's why then it's coming forward now, separate from our parks agenda. And the committee did recommend to move forward with the single stage to reduce like duplicate mobilization on the site considering the additional funds from Heyday and the proximity of that development to here also.
Yeah, as far as construction too, just just overall thought and when this would be done. You know, if we were to continue to move forward at 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 the current kind of schedule, we would bid here shortly. And then there'd be this kind of late fall into winter into even early spring. We were going to leave it a little bit more open to get more favorable bids, knowing that it may be tough to get it all done this fall. And, you know, but it would be usable then coming into the spring of next year when it when it would be done and before early summer. So we are also allowing for a little bit of flexibility in that to see if we could kind of bring some costs down or if the contractors, you know, are full of work this year, they could even tackle it right away next spring.
Are there any other questions or comments on the Shady Grove Park? Otherwise, this is a discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to approve proceeding with the development of the Shady Grove Park in a single phase for the $548,380 and utilizing the additional $198,380 from the Heyday Park contributions.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Dahl and a second by Buzo. Any other discussion on this? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Unfinished business E is discuss business development in the village. And so this is an item brought forth by trustee Stoa, and there's a development discussion PDF linked in the agenda. And I think I'll let Chris go through his memo first, and we can open it up for discussion. And then I think I I brainstormed some points to maybe kind of bring us together. I'll share at the end.
Yeah, so the we discussed the sports complex back there, and some issues were brought up. And I believe staff put in some time to answer and address some of those issues, and we haven't had a chance to hear them. So I was just interested in hearing those. As I mentioned in the the memo, I kept it vague too because there's other development issues that I'm interested in. Like I'm sure everybody on this board has heard people asking for a downtown area. So just trying to throw out any ideas we might have for trying to do something instead of just talking about doing something. I don't really know where to start. If Aaron or Josh or Matt have anything to address for any of the issues that were brought up on the 21st, otherwise if if you just want to go through your brainstorm, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll open it up to board members first if they, if we want to have a collaborative discussion. Otherwise, yeah, I do have some points that I think maybe would help us kind of move forward from here.
I I would like to start if that's okay. So I want to start with an apology to the staff. And you did put work in, and I did recognize it. I did say it. But I didn't give you the opportunity to talk about it. And so I just want to reflect on that. I was the one who asked a lot of questions and asked for a lot of information. And when it came down to it, I didn't make a reconsideration motion, and I regret that, and I am sorry. There are times in this position as an elected official where you're going to miss the mark, and that was it for me. That falls squarely on my shoulders. I take full responsibility for that. And like I said to the staff and the citizens who wanted to hear it, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. So I don't think the work was wasted by any means. I think that it will definitely, you know, be used in future conversations, but I wanted to start with that. So I wanted to take responsibility for that. I also wanted to just kind of touch base on what I think might be helpful for the future. So, you know, there was a lot of community conversation that happened after this. And one of the things that was apparent is that people didn't know about it. And so we had gone through three meetings and didn't receive any response from residents in in favor of that particular project. And I think that maybe that speaks to me a little bit about the process. So I put a document together and want to pass that out to everybody. There's extras for staff and people in the audience that just kind of outlines kind of how how this timeline went. And we don't need to, here's one more, to rehash all of that. But if you flip to the next page, that's really what I want to talk about. So I think, again, you know, I received my first contact from a village resident who supported the project the Tuesday after the third meeting where we had talked about it. And so I think for me, as I reflected back on that, I thought about the fact that is there a way that we could better communicate out in a proactive manner, especially when we have an annexation petition, to get the message out to the public before we are taking action on those things? And so I've I've talked to Rick about, you know, different things that other municipalities do, such as spacing out a public hearing and then, you know, if the Plan Commission Act doesn't go to the next board meeting, it goes to the meeting after. But I would really, really love to have a conversation on process because I think if we can kind of fine tune that a little bit, we'll be in a better place going forward. And it's not necessarily that we need to make ordinance changes, or maybe. But I would like to have some conversation around that. The second thing I want to mention is I would be opening, open to reconsidering the annexation petition. I would love at, I I'm aware, I know, but I'm, they would have to refile. I totally understand that. But I think if we can have a conversation about at a future meeting about the annexation process, I know that Mr. Hoekstra emailed me and said he's still interested in an annexation petition. I would love to have that conversation. Also, I think what has become clear to me through this process is that there was a lot of misunderstanding about what this sport complex was and wasn't. And so there are many people in the community who had the thought, and I I've gotten a lot of feedback, that it was going to be something for their kids to utilize, kind of like a rec center or that sort of thing. And that's really not what my impression of this building was. But I'll tell you, it opened a broader conversation to me of the need for youth sports. And so I even talked to Sean today at Parks and Rec and said, you know, was this something that you were looking at using space with? And he said, not really, but there is a need for space, and he specifically cited basketball. So I think it would be great to have a listening session to get the people in who have had a lot to say on Facebook, but to really understand what is it that they want? Is it that they want a regional tournament sports facility that brings in tourism? Do they want like a community center type thing that has a gym and space that people can use and rent? Or is it kind of a combination of both? But I'd really like to get some clarification around that. I also wanted to say that, you know, and I I tried to make this clear, but I don't think I made it clear enough, that I do support both youth sports and business development. And I think so for me, it's not, do I want a sport complex? Absolutely. You know, what is the best kind and where is the best location, I think, is a great conversation to have. And lastly, I just want to address an issue that has been raised in public that has come up, and that is a conflict of interest. And I've been very mindful since I got elected to the village board of making sure that I understand when I have a conflict and when I don't. And as you guys remember, I have actually left the room when we've had the length of service award conversations both here and at EMS because my husband would benefit from those. And so I did my due diligence ahead of this conversation and reached out to our village attorneys and, you know, did tell them that I do work part time for Oakstone. I am the wedding coordinator. I did one wedding this year, and I have one wedding book next year. And so my role there is very limited. But in speaking with the attorneys, they were of the opinion that my vote on annexation was not a conflict of interest. And so I just really wanted to bring that to the forefront and be transparent about that because unfortunately, there are too many rumors, and and I should have probably said something sooner. But I did do my due diligence in that regard. So I hope that some of these ideas that I put forward, you know, are something that we can look to collaborate on and work together on. You know, and yes, you know, compromise, and hopefully we'll see it come and go both ways, like it's a two way street. But I wanted to recognize my error in in that process, and I will do better. So just wanted to put that all out there.
Thank you. That's a lot. I wasn't expecting a full handout either. The in regards to the annexation process, I know that we had given staff a little bit of a direction before to give us kind of an overview of business and the business development, how that gets brought to the board or the whole process. I actually think we made, we're making Rick give us a presentation. And he's going to do that at maybe the next meeting, depending on his workload.
Yes, it's in the, it's in process.
And I know that staff are also working on a flow chart of kind of the pathway of how how this all works, just kind of as a little bit of additional training. The landowner is interested in coming back to the board at the September 2nd meeting and revisiting the annexation petition. He would, I know he wants feedback on what we, what the board would be interested in seeing. And I'm not sure if that would, those would be any discuss and considers other than feedback maybe at the 9/2 meeting and then kind of going from there.
So I guess just on the annexation point, so been given this some thought today, actually, about, you know, they filed their application in on June 17th, so there's 120 day deadline to act on it. So we can't take any action tonight. But within that deadline, if there was like some future agenda item to like rescind the previous action, I don't know the exact language we would use, but something along those lines. There could be a future agenda item on there, but I think maybe it might be helpful before that discussion to talk about some of the public improvements, I guess, that staff had analyzed on what could be required of the site. So I don't know, Josh or Aaron, I'm putting you all on the spot, but.
So would it make sense to have on the September 2nd kind of a a list of, you know, rescinding the motion so that we can have the discussion, but then having a discussion with the landowner too on the annexation as kind of first steps? Where does the 120 days, I can't do math.
Yeah, so I think like as of right now, we're at about 60 days.
So we still have a few board meetings that could happen.
October 2nd, October 2nd would be 120 days. So it'd have to be at latest, the 2nd
Meeting.
Meeting in September unless we did a special meeting.
So the, I guess the consideration there on timing is just if there were conditions imposed on the annexation, we would do that via agreement. That would be like contingent on actual development. So we would have like some sort of agreement with the property owner where it's recorded against the property. And then if they sold it and it's developed, those are obligations on the future property owner to do any sort of public improvements that the village would want to require. There are some things that could be handled through the the zoning process. So like, and I'm not trying to move this all forward tonight. But so like if the annexation were to be recon, like brought back again, we would presumably do like the rural holding zoning district. That way, the future developer would have to apply for a rezone, and we could consider project specific items there because the information we have is that the sports complex is not moving forward. So just thinking about broadly speaking, all right, future development happens here. What are the considerations for public improvements if that area develops? And then at some point, if it does develop, we would consider like the actual use restrictions or whatever as part of the the rezone process from rural holding to whatever zoning district the property owner would bring in.
In terms of listening sessions and extra getting feedback from individuals, I know that that's something that can be a struggle. And people apparently are not engaged in local governments the way they should be. I think it's really hard, it is really hard to judge whether a project is, people are excited about a project because you just don't get happy, exciting feedback a whole lot. You usually get a little bit more of the the criticism end of the spectrum. I mean, I think it's up to a board members too, if they want to have additional, a listening session. We can put it in the boardroom, and the board member could sit here and 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 get feedback. And I think maybe, again, we always have room for improvement in our our social media channels, our communication. I think the newsletter and that kind of thing. I think the way I struggle a little bit with this too is like, you know, the, a low cost community, community based sports facility or, you know, what does it want to be? It's a private development. And so I think from a village perspective, we can't tell that private developer necessarily, and we can't do that with really anything, right? We can't dictate what goes on people's menus when they bring a restaurant in here. But I think, I mean, I I feel like there's, yeah, there are lots of ways to get additional community feedback. But also, we have to kind of stick to with, we know what our role and responsibility is as a village board moving forward with developments.
I I would like to add, I don't know if there's any way to do this, or maybe I'm asking the adjacent landowners to, I don't know if it would be appropriate to make sure that they receive a letter from the village, that we are having these talk sessions so so they're able to give input. One concern that I have is that I have spoken with two of the landowners. And the board has received a letter from the business that would be affected that they were not directly contacted by the developer. And the developer gave a a different, painted a different picture that he had contacted these individuals. So, you know, I I had concerns about the honesty and the integrity. So I just think if we could just make sure that all who may be affected with land to maybe somehow include them.
Aaron, can, I don't want to put staff on the spot because I know this is more of a board discussion. But can you just speak to the village ordinance that requires notification for the 400 feet? I think it's 400. I think we are one of the largest in Dane County.
Yeah, it's to property owners within 400 feet for the rezoning or for the conditional use permit. So that was where the letters went out. But yeah, anything that the developer would do to reach out is is really up up to them. There are some, some processes that require a neighborhood meeting, like a a plat or a PUD. But those are not applicable to this particular project.
That was one of the concerns that I had, again, was the honesty of the developer. When I've personally spoke with two landowners and the board received a letter saying, no, we have not been contacted.
Is there a verification process to know that those letters went out that the village has? I mean, no, it's part of the plan, it's part of Plan Commission. It gets sent to them before the Plan Commission documents even come out to Plan Commission members.
Yeah, I mean, we know our letters go out because I'm the one who sends them out. I mean, we can do them certified mail, but there's an extra cost to that. But yeah, as far as following up on what contacts the developer has, because that's kind of optional on their part anyway.
From from what I heard, I I thought the developer, I don't know if he knew exactly who he was talking to. I think he ended up speaking to maybe the bar manager who he then, when he was saying whatever he was saying there. I think he, but, you know, I don't know if he said owner or who he talked to, but I think that's who he talked to. He didn't talk to the actual owner of Oakstone.
So we talked a little bit about the neighborhood meetings, and that's for like a plat proposal. I mean, if it would, I don't know what line we draw, you know, if you just have a single business on something that's already zoned business to require a neighborhood meeting. But maybe there would be other instances like an annexation or something along those lines that. Like I do think that the neighborhood. lines that, like I do think that the neighborhood meetings have brought forward development changes from like when developers come as a, like a preliminary, get feedback from the plan commission and then they have the neighborhood meeting and then, I think there are some positive changes that happen because of those meetings. So maybe there would be a few other instances where we might want to require a neighborhood meeting. I don't know if that would help quell some.
Yeah, it's something Rick and I can talk about.
And that's, that's exactly what I was hoping for by talking through process, right? Is what are those things that we can improve upon that doesn't put us in, you know, kind of the situation? And Cindy, to your comments, yes, I know we can't, we can't tell the developer what to do, but I think there's some room and some space to have a conversation about, like for instance, when the proposal first came out, the first person who sent me a Facebook message said, "We need a ice rink." And they're just like, "Oh," and now I'm hearing that we need a pool and like, right? And so that's where I think this bigger conversation of, you know, the potential of even maybe a public-private partnership, right? Or I look at the DeForest Athletic Complex, that's the village of DeForest that oversees that and it's more accessible to people. Because, you know, the proposal that was coming in really was kind of built toward, you know, club sports and that sort of thing and not everybody in this community can afford that for their children. And so I'm more thinking like, is, can we have a conversation about something that's more accessible to more people? I don't know.
And I think, yeah, I mean, the differentiation between club sports and rec are very different and they have very different missions. And if, I think our, we have much more control over funding Sean and Parks and Rec and more programming in that end where, again, private developments, we can, you know, and part of maybe those public meetings, if we do have a little bit more public, or giving this kind of input when the developer comes forward, like, you know, there is this need in Cottage Grove where we don't have this. And you'd be filling a gap and like, would you be, maybe you just want to consider offering X, Y, and Z. But again, hard when it's a private development, private company, private business.
Kind of building off that and just thinking about the public investment and what people might want to see, and I think we have the community survey just from like, you know, thinking about experience of going through what people want to see in the future that, you know, we have, we offer it, paper copies that someone could fill out at village hall and then of course the online survey, but you know, maybe a listening session as part of that too where, you know, people, it might be beneficial for people to understand rather than just reading like the difference between business development proposals and like basically what the tax impact would be of like a public improvement like that, you know, because it's easy to say, "I want a skating rink," but for the village to build a skating rink like indoor is like a huge, that would be significant tax. But if enough people want to see it and would be willing to put in that tax investment, you know, so that's where I think maybe we can step up maybe a little bit of, I don't know, looking to staff for ideas and maybe we can, board members can help with that too, but in the community survey, how we might be able to gather that.
If I can put a plug in, we had a request last year to update the comprehensive plan. There'll be another budget request for that this year and that would encompass a lot of these issues and gather some of that feedback, so that might be a good way to do that.
Or we could do a strategic plan. Sell that in there.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the conversation tonight and, and opening doors for this. And that was part of the reason, the main reason that I was not in favor of it is I didn't feel that I had enough information to make the decision. And I really appreciate that staff is willing to look at the process, which was, you know, it's being looked at, like how, how can we all have better communication? So I just want to say thank you to department heads and staff for reconsidering this.
And I think maybe, yeah, at this board, we just need a little, you know, additional training so that we can move forward more, move forward from this. And maybe that even starts when the pre-annexation agreement comes forward, maybe we have a little bit more conversation on that because I know we did pass that unanimously and we need to have maybe even have a stop and pause in the meeting with the next one and make sure that we know what we're moving forward with before all the other, because there is a lot of cost and time on the property owner too that to move forward with other municipalities and state and, you know, they definitely, if we're approving a pre-agreements, it gives them the green flag to move forward and we should know what we're moving forward on.
And I would just say, I mean, we're, from a staff perspective, we're neither considering or reconsidering anything. We'll do whatever the majority of the board wants us to do from a process perspective or otherwise.
Yeah, and I think maybe it's also, it's on us to give you very clear direction when we want the community to know about this. We want you to put on social media that the, you know, there's a potential development coming in and just to get, I hate social media, but trying to just get the information out a little bit better. And I think, you know, we have the communication plan, we're working on it, but it's on all of us to make sure that we ask for it in meetings too.
And then the difficulty can be where the process, because a lot of times you don't have a lot of great information, there'll be a lot of questions and then what do we, how do we utilize that feedback? And then when oftentimes inevitably, most projects, when we ask for the feedback, it's generally going to be, "We don't want to do this." You're going to hear a lot from people nearby that won't want the development. So then that's okay, it's additional information and then just, you know, the board will just have to wrestle with how to utilize that and is that, yeah, how is that feedback and then how to implement what's ultimately best for the community?
Yeah, and I think, you know, Paula talked about, you know, maybe having a gap of village board period from when it comes to plan commission, but I almost think that gap should happen. Site plan with conditions, if we're going to have a gap, that's, I think that's the time to take it because that's where we actually have the full concept and we can talk about the conditions and what we want to add in, where right now it's still, it was so preliminary to that it's just a concept plan and approving kind of the initial steps where if we have the actual site plan, that's where we can say, "No, we need, you need to consider all of this, we want you to run a traffic study and all these things so that we have all of the data if there needs to be a little bit longer gap between plan commission and the village board." I could see like maybe that's where we'd want to change our process a little bit.
But is the process, now, when this last one came through, we had the public hearing at the plan commission followed, right behind that was discussion, consider. So these were all sort of lumped together, it moved extremely fast and did not necessarily allow, allow a lot of time to vet.
I guess one comment I would just make is, and maybe we can cover this sort of out in the development process, but when we're talking about the village's discretion, like for decision points, it's sort of the rezone, like the annexation, I guess, is the broadest discretion you've got in your toolbox. The rezone is also like, I would say the second highest like discretionary threshold and then I would go conditional use permit and then the site plan. So just like as we're thinking about potential process, about where you've got the most flexibility to impose conditions or to get concessions from developers, you know, we want to sort of utilize those high discretionary points to, in the negotiation process.
Because we have a couple of dates on the calendar, or one date, there is a September 30th budget listening session. Listening sessions haven't really ever been well-attended, so any resident that comes in is, you know, happy to listen regardless if it's 2026 budget-related. If we can't get an answer at that meeting, we'll take the question down and get back to them. Just to kind of put a context and just feedback in general, I think the 2026 budget feedback forum's been available for almost a month. We have three responses. We'll start to push out a little bit more social media and other, other kind of ways to get that promoted. But, you know, as, as board members too, you know, and as you're talking to your constituents, it would be helpful to get that out there because we do, we do rely on what you're telling us and feedback we're getting from residents to help guide decisions. So the more we, feedback we get on that stuff is the better. So that's September 30th from 11:30 to 1:00 and then we have kind of like an afternoon/night from 5:00 to 7:00. And happy to do more of those should we get lots of feedback saying, "Hey, I wasn't able to attend, is there another date and time?" But just want to make sure that it's effective for our residents.
I was just going to say, I know we have a lot of people waiting and such, and so I, you know, when we talk about future agenda topics, I would like to, you know, bring forth, you know, some process-oriented agenda topics and so that we don't have to necessarily go through it all tonight with all the folks waiting, but that I would be willing to kind of take the lead on that and see it on a future meeting.
Right, I think you would also, I know that staff are working on the presentation slash charts, so I mean, maybe this would be good to take a look at all of that together. Chris, you also had in your memo, discuss the downtown of Cottage Grove. Do you want to have that conversation?
We can postpone that.
Unless anyone else would like to. Does anyone else have anything they want to discuss on this? Otherwise, I think we have some future direction and agenda items. All right, well, let's move on to F. We haven't even made it out of unfinished business yet. Discuss status updates from the village's commercial real estate broker. Come on up. Kyle and Tom are here and we've all met you before. Rick, do you want to give a quick summary on this item first?
Sure, so we do have the option of going into closed session. So I guess the, broadly speaking, the direction has been for them to try to acquire properties within Ted 9. So if, you know, there are discussion items about our negotiation strategy or price or I guess updates on negotiations that we would want to keep that confidential, we could have that discussion in closed session. But I don't know if there's like any broad items that you can cover at this point in time.
Yeah, we can certainly give a quick, broad update. Looking at the map that we sent along with all of the agenda materials, I think it was about three months ago that we were here talking about taking a, you know, a little bit more of aggressive approach as far as a status update. Still been difficult for us to get ahold of property owners seven and eight, we're still working on that. We have made good progress on property owners two, three, and four, which consists of two property owners. Lots two and three are owned by the same. So actually just within the last week, had some good phone calls. The purchase price that we are talking about is within the parameters that was set by the board last time. Just working through the explanation to them that if we were to move forward, there were some concerns that they might have as far as how quickly they would need to vacate their property. So to give them some reassurances there that the board would work with them to not, we're not kicking you out the next day here. So I think in terms, generally speaking, they understand the vision that the village has for the area. They don't want to stop that vision, but they also want to make sure that they get a fair deal, which is, I expressed, you know, the same thing that the village board and village staff is looking to do as well. So that's the very high-level kind of overview.
So I guess later on in the meeting, if the village board feels like it's required to go into closed session to discuss that topic further, a motion to enter into closed session would be appropriate.
Comments or questions from the board that aren't relevant for closed session? And is there interest in moving into closed session?
I guess the question is, are those particular parcels something you're prepared to begin negotiating?
We, the hope is that the conversations can continue in the next week or two and then if that were to work out well, we'd have a letter of intent that we'd be putting together and bringing that before the board with more specific terms.
Yeah, I would like to go into closed session, have more conversations on that. Would the motion be to go into closed session at the end of the regular agenda?
Or do you want to do that now?
We would do it all at the end with the other item potentially.
Sometimes we talk about doing it in the moment, so I don't know. Okay, so we'll come back for closed session. Any other comments or questions for open? All right, we are discussing considering listing contract for 612 North Main Streets. You're back.
Yep. So we had sent you, this is a state form, we just need this to market the property. So this is our listing contract. We've already had some conversations with some potential tenants for the building. We've taken pictures, so we're, we're all ready to go. We just need this basically signed to allow us to put the sign in the ground and the property online. The only two items that just wanted to bring to your attention, per line number nine, it asks the rate, so we are proposing to market this property as a gross rental rate, working with Cameron, we'll get the numbers all situated, but when you're working with tenants that are most likely going to be on shorter lease term periods, it's just sometimes easier for them to do a gross lease than a net lease. And then line 11 specifies a minimum lease term. We put 12 months on that line right now. We can obviously change that to whatever number the village board may see fit, but with the understanding that these leases, we want to have some flexibility long-term. We don't want to tie the building down to a three, four, five-year lease such as that. So just wanted to bring those to your attention, but the rest of the language in there is very similar to what we had when we worked with the village board on Commerce Park land previously.
Comments, questions?
So there's currently a subtenant in there? Where do we net out in terms of who that subtenant is in terms of the agreement, their intention, the space they're using?
The building is currently vacant.
This is not the new tech site, this is the old Mike Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the, okay, okay, I was thinking this was the new tech site, okay.
Otherwise, it's a discussing consider.
I'd make a motion to approve the listing contract for 612 North Main Street as discussed.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion by Murphy and a second by Dahl. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed, staying, motion carries. New business. I feel like new news. Does anyone watch the big podcast? Okay. We'll do the annual review of village consultants and service providers. We've got Johnson Black, Stafford, and the Colonial Club. Thank you so much for your patience tonight. Johnson Black, would you like to come up first? Okay. And then we're going to switch the order because Stafford is stuck sitting here for the rest of the meeting anyway, so we'll have Colonial Club go second.
Kim, do you have it going?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so it's me again. So I'm Larry Aspisen, Director, Johnson Black Business Technologies, handling the IT networking, infrastructure, and cybersecurity for the village. Jacob is the Service Manager. They're all sick of us, but you guys only see us once a year. So just kind of covering what we're doing, how things are going and what we've been up to basically. Agenda slide is pretty much worthless at this point. Our team has grown, so the only difference is we added Brayden Parman as a full-time employee, which is great because now everybody on the team doesn't have a name that starts with J finally, and it makes my life a little easier. But he's been phenomenal and all the other guys are still doing great, taking care of everybody and I think pretty much everybody knows everybody at this point, so it's been really good. Just covering our metrics through August 11th is when I printed this. It's basically data in, data out at this point, so 388 came in, which probably means three tickets came in that morning right when I ran this report. And we've closed 385, so there was three outstanding. Our average response time is four minutes because that's what we focus on, getting to people immediately. Resolution time is 27 minutes, so basically nobody's waiting. If somebody needs help, we're on it, we're taking care of them, we're getting it done, they're moving on and getting work done, which is the whole point. Total tickets, this is adding in all the admin tasks, we're doing backup verifications, all the stuff that isn't necessarily user-facing. That gets up to 562 tickets with 560 of those being resolved, so again, probably another two tickets that came in while I ran the report. So basically, these are perfect numbers and exactly what we'd want to see. There's nothing hanging out there for long periods of time, there's not a long delay for people getting help and village employees are being able to work whenever they need to basically. We do track a bunch of different metrics. One of the things we do is day of the week. We do week of the year, month, all that sort of stuff too. But just as an example, Monday is the busiest day everywhere in the world and the reason is because Friday is the slowest. So basically, our theory is that after about 1:00 PM on Friday, they will deal with it Monday. Monday becomes Monday and there we are. So Monday's So Mondays are always the busiest, but you can see it's pretty well spread out. We're doing stuff all day, every day. There's a handful of weekend tickets I've done, and that's mostly Sean Brew Cigar's fault, but that's okay. Jacob, I'll probably, I'll let you speak to the security overview.
So this is our security overview. Just a quick bullet points on the things we're doing on a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly basis. So daily tasks, we're checking our backups, reviewing them, verifying that backups did complete, looking for any alerts and errors, and remedying them. System alert review, any, if any, alerts came in overnight, taking a look at those, security alerts, system offline alerts. Weekly tasks, we're always looking at the security health checks. We have four separate tools. We've got our antivirus, a zero trust tool, our RMM that are all always looking at stuff, throwing alerts that we can look at. And then our service metrics review, just, you know, I'll take a look, make sure that no tickets are sitting, that we're taking care of everything as it comes in. Monthly tasks, we do an environment review of the security tools, make sure that there's no outstanding devices that, you know, were replaced, that are still in there, and that obviously, we didn't miss any new ones. Security report reviews, just looking over the security reports. We do vulnerability scanning and reporting, so any kind of vulnerabilities that get flagged, anything new that comes out, we're always working on patching those. Quarterly tasks, asset aging review. That's Larry, he loves that stuff.
And Cam.
And Cam. And then we do test restore our servers from backups on a quarterly basis. And that is, we've got a test environment at our building that we just make sure that these servers spin up, so in the event we need them, we know they work. And then annual tasks, five-year budget, again, that's Larry and Cam. But then we do also do penetration testing where we, you know, simulate an attack from outside, see if we can get into the building, patch up anything that might be found. And then we also do test disaster recovery of our servers from the cloud backups. That's different from the quarterly test restores of the on-prem backups where, you know, we actually, we take backups to both storage on-site and up in the cloud. We're able to actually, in our disaster recovery environment, spin the servers up in the cloud and run them that way. So, you know, in the event of some kind of damage to the building, something like that, we can spin stuff back up.
He says "we," but it's him.
Yeah.
It's very nice of you. This is kind of an overview of the type of reports we're seeing. So like on this one, you'll see there's three pending and three failed patches out of 11, 12,000. That machine's offline. So, you know, we find that, we're like, what are the three? Which is kind of how our life is, right? 12,000 successes, and we're worried about the three. But, so that's the kind of stuff we're using these for. Again, is everything under, you know, is everything set up correctly? Are all the configurations correct? Hundreds across the board? Okay, on to the next report, that kind of stuff. So just kind of taking everything into account, reviewing all the different systems that integrate, and making sure that we're protected on that front. In '25, some of the initiatives, we did a camera system at North Lawn Park, and we did preparation for wells and water towers should that come about, which I think, I think we already did that. And then access control again at North Lawn Park, where we're able to let people that rent out the facility get in. There's no key. It's a lot easier and cleaner, that way you don't have to get a key back. It's much safer. So we did that, again, preparation for wells for the future. Security upgrades, we set up the live camera learning on the PD cell phones and computers. We started the penetration testing, both internally and externally there. And we started the organizational password management solution, meaning we can securely share passwords for things like a bank account, so in the event there's catastrophe to one person, we still have the password there. It's not a, it's a business continuity thing more than anything, but it's also a secure way to share. We've only had to do five workstation replacements this year. We're really up to date on our replacement schedule because of that guy. So that's been nice, not a huge cost on that front. And then upcoming stuff, we'll have our cybersecurity training and phishing campaigns coming up. Every year we do that. We'll do the asset replacement review, meaning schedule that out however it works best for the village. Monthly, quarterly reporting, like Jacob spoke about. End-of-year numbers we'll get, and then we'll be doing the Windows 11 upgrade as Windows 10 goes to end of life here coming up soon. So happy to take any questions. One other thing I will say is, we did actually sponsor both the, what is it, the Community Night Out and the Music in the Grove, because all you have to do is ask.
With Taylor Swift.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know. There's, we have another municipality, and one of the people, there's a very big Taylor Swift fan, so they were excited to get in line for that. But yeah, so we're happy to see you ask anything. I'm kind of a sucker when it comes to that. Also, I finished my fifth year at Miracle League this year, which was really cool. It's a really great thing, really great thing we do here, so.
Yeah, I guess that, thanks Larry. Before board member questions, I'm just gonna just make some general comments. Really appreciate Larry's team. So obviously, with the police station, there's a lot from an IT perspective that goes into that building. I appreciate why we do have a service contract with Johnson Black. All the time that went into the police station and planning was not billed extra. There's no additional autoscope charges. Love Sean to death, but Sean probably keeps Larry busy here than anybody else. With cameras, you know, getting all the park systems with cameras and security, trying to move some of that stuff into a little bit of the 21st century to make sure that we're protecting those assets. Again, none of that's being billed above and beyond our contract. It took Larry like two years to adjust our worker workstation count numbers, so underbilled us for several years. We won't tell anybody at Johnson Black.
They're not watching.
But again, really appreciate the vendor relationship as more of, like, they are part of the village as opposed to a vendor that we're just paying for a service. And like Larry mentioned, they did contribute $500 to Community Night Out. And I don't know if Sean got you $1,000 for the other event, but.
Send an email, whatever it was, I'm writing the check, so.
Certainly appreciate, certainly appreciate whenever vendors give back. That's appreciative. It shows that they're invested in the community, so.
Absolutely.
Comments or questions for Johnson Black?
I don't have a question, because quite frankly, this is over my head. But, but I do have a compliment, which is, I have had to call, because I locked myself out, couldn't remember my email, and just want to, you know, compliment the person that I worked with was very friendly, helped me, didn't make me feel stupid, so I just really appreciated that.
Yeah, awesome. Good stuff for you guys, because it's a totally different email than you, yeah. It's not uncommon.
Cindy, if I could, way back here.
Over there.
Yep. I'll mirror what Cameron said from the PD side of it. Johnson Black was really on point this year when we had asked them to assist us with the new building. I deal with all the IT stuff from the law enforcement side of it, and we have a lot of, you know, complex systems. I can say that their numbers are probably a little higher than that, but they don't track every phone call that we make, which are regular from me. So they're really on top of what they do. It's been a breath of fresh air to have an IT organization and company that, like Cameron said, does feel like family and a part of the village organization. So kudos to them, and the PD is happy to work with them.
Anything else? Otherwise, you're off the hook for another year.
Gonna make me blush here. Thank you.
All right, we'll invite the Colonial Club up next. And thank you for spending your late night with us. Sorry, we got a little chatty.
I feel like I should have brought you coffee cookies for some of them. All right, hopefully, we won't take too much of your time. I'm Melody Riedel. I'm the Executive Director of the Colonial Club. I've been in front of you all many times, just not as the Executive Director. I accepted that position back in January. And my coworker is Laura Jennings.
And I'm the Director of Services, which is what Melody used to be, so I'm here in a new role also.
Yes. Savannah was unable to join us this evening. Her plans changed, and she has an hour drive just from the Colonial Club, so I gave her forgiveness this evening, because I didn't want her to be home too late. Just some background of the Colonial Club. We were established back in May of 1969, so we're about 56 years old and going strong. We're a private nonprofit corporation, serving people over the age of 60. Our agency budget is about 1.4 million. We have 32 employees. Seven of them are full-time, 25 of them are part-time. Funding comes from our fundraising opportunities, which is Strawberry Fest, which happened in June. We just accomplished our swinging for seniors golf outing back a little earlier here in August. And then we have our Colony Ale, which is a beer and wine tasting event coming up in November, the first Friday in November, so. We also have donations that come into our building. We charge private fees for our services, our trips, our rentals, and some classes that we offer. We also receive funding from Dane County, and then the cities, villages, and towns such as you guys. Thank you very much. The offerings of Colonial Club, I'm not going to go detail by detail. I'll let you ask questions if you need to. Our activities, we brought some couriers along for you. We bring them to your village every month, so they are available throughout your village. But we have some copies that we're going to leave behind for your National Night Out that's coming up, I think. Okay. Classes, arts, crafts, exercise programs, support activities, support groups, all those kinds of things are happening. Bingo, of course, happens at the Senior Center. And then we have some trips that happen around the area. Our Adult Day Center, everyone who comes to this program, there is a reason why they're coming to this program. Typically, they have memory concerns, and they cannot remain at home by themselves. They do have some medical diagnosis that their family needs a break from caregiving, so it's a safe haven for those folks to come to us. We provide engaging activities for them in a group setting, arts, crafts, activities, exercises for the mind and body, music programs, and a lot of pet therapy. They love the dogs coming in. So do we. Yeah. We also provide bathing services, along with personal cares as needed. We do have medication management while they're at the center. We offer them lunch. The big piece for the Adult Day Centers, we're providing that respite for the caregivers, so that they have time to go grocery shopping. They have time to maybe sleep, or run other errands and just take a break. But a lot of them are still working, so they're coming by us while the caregivers are at work and getting their jobs done as well. Our case management services, our goal is to keep everyone in their homes as long as possible. That's their goal, as well as the Colonial Club. They, the specifics that they are able to offer really go beyond the list that I have provided for you. It's just kind of a snapshot of what they're doing, helping people turn 65, which is an undertaking all in itself. Prescription and health insurance, food security programs, financial utility assistance programs, elder abuse and neglect resources, and respite care options to go alongside them and help them through that whole process. Support of home care, our employees are going into their homes, helping them with their home tour services, making sure that they can get their daily tasks done in order for them to be able to stay in their own homes, such as their laundry, meal prep, grocery shopping, cleaning their bathroom, making sure their floors are all clean, that kind of thing. The meal program, we provide home-delivered meals as well as congregate site meals. All of our meals are one-third of the daily nutritional requirement for our older adults. We have volunteers that deliver the meals to the people, to their homes. As mentioned here, that might be the only visit that that senior has throughout the day, and they're so thankful to see that person come to their door with a smile on their face and bringing them a hot meal. It also provides a safety check, which is an important piece for our home-delivered meal program. If that person's not answering the door, we're calling them to make sure that they're okay. If we do not get to them, then we're calling a family member in emergency contact. More times than not, they're fine, but we do find instances where they are lying on the floor, and they've been there for a bit, and we're the ones that are finding them. We're the ones that are calling 911 to have them come in and take care of them. The congregate meal site, they come to the Colonial Club. They can have a hot meal with us. Also provides some socialization and decreases that isolation, which is one of the main concerns for our older adults these days. Transportation, wide variety of different options here. The Colonial Club can provide transportation to someone, but they do have to have lunch with us. That's one of the requirements that Dane County requires us to do. But once they get to our building, then they can participate in the bingo, in the exercise programs, or whatever they want to do, knitting, crocheting, any of our programs that are happening, they can do that. There is no fee for that, it's just a donation for the ride. They do need to be independent, able to care for themselves. Medical rides can be scheduled through RSVP in Madison. You used to have a volunteer that did that in Cottage Grove, and they had since left, so that program got transferred over to the Madison RSVP location. And then you still have the grocery bus and the East Town Bus, provided by Transit Solutions for a minimal cost. It's like two bucks. Volunteering, we utilize volunteers in many facets of our organization. Of course, our home-delivered meal program. We have volunteers that are receptionists, answering our phones, which usually works out very well, but every once in a while, they'll hang up on you. But that's okay. You all call back, so that's a good thing. They help us in our Adult Day Center. They're friendly visitors, going into people's homes, chatting with them, playing Uno, playing cards, whatever they'd like to do. They help us in our kitchen, and they run errands for our older adults and take them to non-medical appointments. The important stuff for you all, the 2024 people served in Cottage Grove, we had 390 times where an individual came to the Colonial Club that signed in. We do have a sign-in process, but not everyone uses that sign-in. No matter how much we try, how much we encourage them to use that program, they just don't. They just sneak right in and go to their activity. We have about 400 volunteer hours for the residents of Cottage Grove between our meal program, running errands, helping with other things around the house. We served 44 individuals, that we provided all of those different hours of services to those folks into their homes. 2025 data, people have already come 243 times to the Colonial Club. We have about 200 hours for residents of volunteer time, and currently, we're serving 18 individuals in Cottage Grove for the items listed below. And last but not least, you guys support us with $30,000 for, in 2024. I believe that's what it is for 2025 as well. We thank you so much for that contribution. I just wanted to give you some comparisons, some comparisons for other communities that are city-run. Manona, for example, has a population right around yours. Their cost for their senior services is $270,000. McFarland has a little bit higher population, and they are at 401,000. 400 and, yeah, 100,000, yeah. So I just wanted to give that information out to you as well. Do you have anything to add, Laura?
Just that, you know, as a nonprofit, we're one of the only, I think the only one in Dane County that's a nonprofit. All the others are run by their municipalities.
Any questions?
Questions from the board. Thank you for the information and for staying late tonight, but it was really helpful to have it kind of all laid out this way.
Yeah. There's probably going to be some challenges with seniors, especially those on fixed income, and navigating any healthcare changes. And as our population continues to age, I know that this is an extremely important service that you provide and provide to residents here in Cottage Grove. So helping keep people in their houses as long as possible, and giving them that support and providing activities, I think it really enhances the lives of seniors in our community. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, do you want these thing up?
Yeah, Ingo can take the brochures. Rick's turn. Rick's turn.
All right, do I have to share, or you?
I'm the resident shareholder today.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Happy to be here. So I think, I'll just start off by a little bit about myself and Larry. I think you all know us at this point. So Larry and I are both partners at Stafford Rosenbaum. Larry is the chair of our government law practice team there, and I'm actually on our board of directors. So I guess I'm a little higher up on the chain than him, but that's for you all to decide. So about Stafford Rosenbaum, we are a firm of approximately sixty attorneys. It changes. We've been adding people for as long as I've been there. We have offices in Madison, Milwaukee, so we're only a Wisconsin firm, but we have attorneys that practice elsewhere, licensed to practice elsewhere. And we can actually trace our roots back over a hundred-and-forty years. I think we're at a hundred-and-forty-five now, right around there. So our practice areas, we have, we're a full-service law firm, so we run the gamut of everything. So obviously, you all know we do government law, so we represent cities, villages, towns, counties, drainage districts, sewage districts. We represent all sorts of government entities all over Wisconsin. It's something that Larry and I are very passionate about. We love working with government officials. Like, they're just generally good people. They're trying to be problem solvers and truly serve their communities. But because we are a full-service law firm, that's one thing that we like to pride ourselves on is having sort of a deep bench where we can, you know, try to find the most effective, efficient way to service the village. So if an issue comes through and we know somebody that knows something a lot more about this than I do, then we're just going to send it to them and hopefully get an answer in thirty minutes rather than four hours. So, we, like I said, we, comes up all over the, so we've represented the village since 2020. Like I said, with our deep bench, we've tried to, we try to pass things off as much as we can. So we've had about a dozen attorneys do work for the village over the past year, specializing in different areas, like we've done some nonprofit issues. We do, you know, business, real estate transactions, you know, sometimes employment questions come up. But we really do try to provide the best service possible in the most efficient manner and in a timely manner. So we're always trying to be very responsive to whatever the needs are of village staff and board members. So some of the services, I don't even think this encompasses everything. I mean, we do work really closely with the board and village staff in trying to implement the direction of the board. We draft ordinances, we put resolutions together, we negotiate agreements. We do feel like we're really integrated in the team here, so it's, you know, we don't really feel like we're the outside sort of guns-for-hire. We're working very closely with village staff and, you know, as the board directs. So we try to advise people on the legal processes and I guess when it comes down to it, I think Larry and I view ourselves more as like pragmatic problem solvers. So if there's something that the board is trying to accomplish, we're going to, you know, we're not going to try to find a way to say no. We're going to try to find the best way forward to accomplish whatever those goals are. So, and again, we do the education presentations that, we're working on one to bring for all of you in a few weeks here. And we also are in charge of prosecuting village ordinance violations. So we have a designated person for the village that whenever somebody's issued a ticket in the village, they go through the legal process with the municipal judge here. And our prosecutor for the village works to try to resolve those or take cases to trial if necessary. So, I know I'm just sort of like speeding through everything. It's been a long night. But I guess Larry and I, we're very appreciative of the opportunity to work with the village. We truly do really enjoy our time here and we've enjoyed it the last five years and, you know, hoping to continue that relationship. And so, like I said, we're just very dedicated to working with staff and the board here and it's a great group of people that really make our work more enjoyable and it makes it easier on us. So I'm happy to answer any questions or criticism, comments, anything.
Because I said it with Johnson Block, Stafford also is contributing to Community Night Out held this Wednesday. Appreciate it. So I had to give him kudos there, or them kudos.
But not Taylor Swift. So I think everyone on the board appreciates all of your time and effort that you put into keeping us in line and keeping this village moving. Thank you.
I'd like to just advocate for a buzzer for Rick. Because sometimes he's kind of looking over and we're all just chatting, but great job. Thank you for all you do.
Did you mean one of those easy buttons?
Thank you, Rick. So Stafford handles our non-labor-related issues directly. The other firm that works with the village is Axley. We had a closed session and presentation the last meeting. I have no intention to bring them forward through an annual service provider review this year unless requested by board members. But since they'll be here presenting, kill two birds with one stone.
Who else do we have at the next upcoming meeting, Cameron? If you don't know, that's okay.
Yep, so we have Ellers Strand. Ellers Strand, general engineering, Baker Tilly and Pelletary.
Looking forward to it. All right, let's move on to discuss options for upgrades to election equipment. There's a memo in the agenda and then there was an additional email with the quote that is referenced in there. And so I'll turn it over to Lisa to kind of run it, run through this.
Thank you, Cindy. It's kind of laid out in the memo, but I just wanted to let you know that these are some options that we have coming forward. Had a meeting with Dane County Clerk. Our equipment is aging out. The DS two-hundreds, two of them have been in service longer than others, obviously, but we're probably looking at three to four years possibly before Dane County will no longer be supporting, they will be moving on, so we'll be making these changes. So with that, we've had this on the equipment list for replacement and that mark kind of had kept moving and Cameron and I kept looking at it, waiting to hear the outcome from Dane County because of how equipment is certified. And we have maintenance coming up, so that's why this is before you to think about whether or not you want to put money into equipment that we have and do the maintenance that is scheduled for later this year, or if you wanted to move ahead with the purchase of the DS three-hundreds for 2026.
And so this was the first, this year is the first that we have, why they've been alluding to replacement. It's coming down the road. This is just our opportunity to bring it to the board to the first time that we were made aware of these purchases that will need to be made in the upcoming years. So just wanted to give the chance for our board to discuss from a budgetary perspective, you know, how you'd like us to handle the situation in regards with replacement or maintenance.
So would they, we would need to purchase the new ones by what date, or what year?
So that is to be determined yet. The best that I have from what the county clerk is saying is three to four years. That's usually what happens when they switch out equipment. They give you kind of that sunset date in that range because not every community has the ability to do it, you know, at the next following budget year. And because of the certification of equipment, how that has to happen through the federal and then the state.
Do costs increase over the next three to four years of the equipment? And then is there, are there issues obtaining the equipment with the longer you wait?
So it is my understanding that the price does change. The vendor, which is ESNS, did say when we had this meeting with Dane County that they're right around that seventy-five hundred. A few months ago, they were offering six-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar trade-in value for the DS three-hundreds, but they had a state that traded in thousands, and so they don't need them. So that price dropped and obviously the expense of how things are manufactured these days, those do increase. So I would anticipate that if we move this down the road, that yes, that price is probably going to change. The quote that is attached, so that was emailed out, is valid through September fifth. They do have them available at this time. The three-hundreds were certified not that long ago.
So just to kind of also, when we're looking at counting out the years, so twenty-six is a busy-ish year for election. Twenty-seven is a softer year, but twenty-eight is the next presidential election. I would not recommend planning to replace them in 2028. So really, when I'm looking at this decision and conversation, it's, are we talking about 2026? Are we talking about 2027? We might, I think, Lisa, we could work with the vendor too on placing, placing kind of an order if we can lock in these prices early.
Right, yeah. So if you were wanting to do this for 2026, we could lock this order in and our billing wouldn't be until 2026 for that budget. They're pretty flexible in that regards on when you're purchasing.
I got to believe the longer we wait, the trade-in value of an obsolete scanner, the DS two-hundred, is going to continue to go down. We get fifteen-hundred bucks now. Unfortunately, we didn't do it when they were a little hotter. And obviously, the cost of equipment's going to continue to go up. So I think we need to figure out how and where we need to include it in the twenty-six budget. And I guess the question is, would you need a motion to move forward with a purchase order contingent on billing? Not happening till twenty-six, or what are we looking for?
Well, we just have it on as a discuss tonight, just because we want to bring it forward. So, and we have time because the maintenance of the equipment isn't going to be happening until December. I can work with our account manager and see, and we can bring this back for the next agenda. If that's, we just really wanted some direction tonight.
So you would still need to do maintenance in December if we ordered for twenty-six?
Well, we would.
Do you think that, because this is an April election, right? Depending on when you would.
Right, we would have them certified. I don't know how long that process takes. We would have them in place. They would bring them. We would probably take them at that time, or they would be delivered. We have other equipment because we have, the other aspect of this is express votes, which are ADAs, but we use those for other things too. So that equipment is going to be going for maintenance, so we're going to be doing part of it. This is just for the DS three, or two-hundreds.
I'm fine with Pete's suggestion. Seems like the board is in agreement. Is that enough direction for everyone?
So what I'm hearing is bring back actionable item on the next agenda.
Thank you.
We now have discussed possible acquisition of property located at six-sixteen North Main Streets. I will let Rick do a summary on this. There's an option to go into closed session then. And I don't know if that's, if the summary is short, you don't need to come up and.
I guess, so this property was listed on the market. The list priced, I think, I just checked on Zillow, was like seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So it's adjacent to TID nine, so we wouldn't be able to use TID funds for it. But I guess if the village board is interested in having a discussion about the potential of acquiring the property for a certain price, you know, that's another item we could go into closed session for if you feel like it's required to continue the conversation for negotiation purposes. But as we mentioned, it's outside of TID nine, so it would have to be budgeted for separately. I don't know if you guys have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is we spoke with the Realtor on Friday. As of Friday, there were no offers to purchase on the property yet. We didn't speak with her today. And the reason for the sale is that the owner had passed away, so that's why it came to the market.
I just was going to say I would like to talk about it in closed session.
Closed session? All right, we'll move into, you can go back to the, your waiting chairs and we will go, move into closed sessions maybe shortly. We'll move on to reports from village boards, commissions and committees, public works. Properties and sustainability is first, with a couple of discussing considers for us. Chris?
We met Tuesday, August twelfth at five-thirty at MSB. We approved the minutes. We approved the snow and ice policy, which I can, that's a discussing consider for us. I'll punt that to Kyla after I summarize everything. We had the 2026 engineering budget update. We talked about ATVs, UTVs, oh, sorry, the engineering update is, was a recommendation to not do the path at McCarthy Park because the cost is a lot higher than anticipated. We discussed and approved the Purple Cow contract, which again, I will punt to Kyla afterwards to go into more detail. We talked about ATV, UTV. Again, that was a four-three vote. We discussed traffic sign, stop sign policy. We gave some guidance to Kyla to come back to us so we can figure out a, more of a standardized policy. And that sort of dovetailed with the, discussing the bike and ped comp plan, just to sort of bring it all together. Engineers reports, West Lawn, concrete's been poured. They have a few electrical items remaining. Quarry Ridge Phase D, they're still working through that. They're still in communication with the developer. Amazon, contractors completed public utility construction to the site. They've submitted roadway improvement drawings for Highway NNTT, and those are going to be reviewed. Haydays is planning to begin hopefully in this month. The, whoops, I closed it out. Sorry, one sec. Directors reports, talked about lighting at Glacial Drummond Trailhead. It's in the draft management, management plan for completion next year. We talked about the adopt a storm drain program. I think they recently had a Facebook thing too. I think Paula and Cindy signed up for it, so that is good. They had, gave some data on what's been collected and how many people have been collecting. Street and maintenance, she's, Kyla's working with vendors to receive pricing for chip sealing and crack filling. They're maintaining one-on-one East Cottage Grove Road. And we got an update about the traffic counter at Landmark and Michelle, if anybody's interested in the comparisons before and after a stop sign. We'll probably come back, one sec, come back next month to discuss that in more detail. And then we adjourn because that was it.
All right, so you have two discussing considers here. So the first one is the snow and ice policy?
Yeah, I'm just going to hand that over to Kyla.
Previously, our last snow and ice policy was updated in the year 2009. We are a tad out of date, so included in the packet, and that was approved at Public Works, was an updated snow and ice policy for village staff, both our personnel and for village residents to understand when we activate our snow and ice policy, when we plow, our calibration behind our trucks, the classifications of the different streets, where we start. That sort of thing can all be found in that policy. Something to give more clarity and provide an update that we can link on our website to be more transparent on where we start. In the last year that I was, have been here, we didn't have too many complaints in the snow and ice world. I considered that a victory for my first winter, to be completely honest. But now that we have brine capabilities and our new snow plows that are hopefully going to be done here soon, we wanted to get something in the policy and because we're using considerably less salt. So that is reflected in this policy as well.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, it's a discussing.
I would move approval of the updated snow and ice policy.
One second.
All right, there's a motion by Severson and a second by Murphy. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number two, Purple Cow contract for 2026 and beyond.
Correct. We have been working with Purple Cow since 2023 on a three-year contract. So this contract will expire in 2026, so looking to renew this contract in perpetualness until one of us comes back one way or the other as it no longer is suitable for the other. This significantly reduces staff time for brush collection and composting. We're able to haul everything to Purple Cow during their operational hours. Before, we had Purple Cow as a vendor, we were chipping all of the brush and putting it in a stockpile, which we no longer have, and brush collection took three weeks. And brush collection took three weeks, and then we would start over again. So this allows staff to do more maintenance throughout the village.
Comments or questions on this one?
I would move approval of the contract renewal for Purple Cow.
And I'll second, and I think add on the benefits. I think it's very beneficial for residents too, to be able to take all of the items to the collection site together. So I think it's also improved the resident experience too, so thank you.
All right, there's a motion by Severson and a second by Murphy. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Chris, Utility Commission.
We met on Wednesday, August thirteenth at five PM in this very room. We approved the minutes, we approved the bills. We talked about the Farm Interceptor project. This was rather exciting because they're at ninety percent and they got a couple of different developers to come together and agree on stuff, so that's good. We had a thrilling discussion about the water and sewer long-range cash flow and rate analysis plan. We approved that, discussed and considered a couple of zero lot line applications and approved both of those. Engineers' report for utility is largely the same as Public Works. I'll mention a couple of different things. Skated upgrades, generator's been installed, HVAC systems are operational, motor control centers have been installed and energized. As of that meeting, minor concrete work still remained, like bollards. Well, two rehabilitation is progressing, progressing toward ninety percent, should be completed in the fall. Water main looping and gas and TT. They had discussions with County and Parks and the town of Sun Prairie about right-of-way. Develop, or sorry, the, what's it, what you call it? Directors' report is as follows. Verizon and the village have executed lease agreement and signed for the easement. Sent that to Dane County. Exorcise some water valves. Lift station got a deep clean and installing cameras at well facilities. And then we adjourned.
Just because the thirteenth marked a pretty critical date for the utilities, which is essentially giving direction for the following budget. So sewer presented a ceiling of a five percent rate increase in rates, along with doing, further studying the, the composition of variable and fixed rate components, just to make sure that we're adequately charging our users the right allocation. It also gave staff direction to implement or, or start working on a conventional rate case with the PSC for, for water rate. In my professional opinion, I don't see a rate being implemented before January one of twenty twenty seven, possibly fourth quarter twenty twenty six, but based off of when we would pull the, the rate case from the PSC and when the PSC would approve it, I can't see a world where we, they'd be able to turn that around before twenty seven. The water did show relatively significant projected rate increase. That is primarily being driven by the well two project and the looping. It is the first major investment of the water utility since twenty sixteen, which was Tower Three. And so Kyla and I will continue to work on chipping down those, those project costs right now from the estimates that we have, as well as looking for efficiencies in the water utility. As a reminder for a couple of people who maybe weren't on the board, the last time we did a water rate case study is while we submit information to the PSC, the PSC will make a final call on what our rates should be. It doesn't happen very often. Sometimes we would submit information and they would say, no, you have to increase it further than what you're projecting. It's always their kind of discretion. So we'll continue to report it up from Utility Commission as an FYI to the, the village board as we go through that process.
Comments or questions for Chris or Cameron or Kyla? Or just Cameron and Kyla? We will move on to Plan Commission, which met on Wednesday, August thirteenth. We approved minutes. We had two discussing consider zero lot line applications, which were approved at the Utility Commission right before us. They're on our agenda tonight at the village board level. And Erin, I don't know if you want to add anything, but it was basically from twenty, or twenty thirteen, that they were, they just need to re-record the CSM and confirm that the sanitary sewer front are back.
Yeah, they were approved back then but never recorded, so they brought it back again this time. No concerns, just that they required a maintenance agreement for both. It's different ownership entities for the two buildings, but there is overlap in the people involved, so it's.
And then the only other thing that Plan Commission had was discussing potential amendments to the subdivision ordinance of Chapter two seventy-four, and that came out of the twenty twenty-three Ad-Hoc Housing Committee. Several recommendations, and the Plan Commission is going to tour Grandview Commons as the Housing Chapter Committee also toured. To kind of, so we have a visual and we're giving our feedback on the suggested changes, and then it'll be incorporated eventually into Public Works. Anything to add there?
That covers it.
So we do have discussing considers for the zero lot line application, for the two difference.
I'd make a motion to approve the zero lot line application from Stephen T. Randall Revocable Trust to split the existing duplex at one-on-one and one-on-three East School Road into two parcels with conditions.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion by Murphy and a second by Dahl. Any other discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. And on the second one?
Then I'd also make a motion to approve the zero lot line application from McFarland Meadows LLC to split existing duplex at one-on-five and one-on-seventy School Road into two parcels with conditions.
I'll second.
The same motion by Murphy, second by Dahl. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. And then we do have a third discussing consider, and this was, Village Board already saw these documents. There's a little, there's some revision in there. It was postponed at the last meeting so that we could have further discussion with the applicant, and it's back on the agenda. Erin, I don't know if you want to give a little additional summary?
Yeah, so this was, the site plan was approved at the Plan Commission with conditions that the applicant's making some improvements to the elevations. And Ian, the architect, and Dave, the developer, are here. If you guys want to have a seat up there and maybe go over some of the changes?
All right, so there were three major changes that we made per the Plan Commission staff recommendations. The first is we added a parapet to the facade of the main street side right there. And then we also brought the entry elements up over top of that parapet just to make them more pronounced on that street facade, to start to bring in that more commercial strip kind of styling that I think the Plan Commission was alluding to, as well as to differentiate it from the alternate side of the building, which is going to be that more, slightly more industrial-focused side. And then the third change is we reorganized the materials to give it a little bit more of a grounded foundation. And we provided two alternate schemes, one with a change in metal panel shape, something that's got a deep, tight texture to it, to create shadow lines, to change the scale as you go over the materials, as well as a burnished CMU facade just to change the materiality of it. I know the staff report mentions a split face, but our intent was a burnished, just to make a small correction to that. And, but beyond that, this is what we presented to the village board meeting. And we're welcome to any further discussion.
Comments or questions from the board?
I'm just gonna say one thing just to get it on the record, and I recognize that it's too late in this process to do anything about this project. But I would like to see going forward parking lots in the rear, so that the building is the focus when you come into the, into the village. I emailed that, and I, he, he emailed back and said that they, they tried that and it didn't work for what they wanted. But it is designated as mixed use in the, future land use in the comp plan. So I, along with parking lots in the back, I would like in the future for some of these parcels to see some actual mixed use in there as well. Thank you for coming down.
I appreciate you coming back, because I think there were just some lingering questions, and since you weren't here before, we just postponed it, so I appreciate that. And if you remind me again, is it, it's a fencing that goes between your property and the neighboring properties to the north? Is that correct?
Yes, there's the screening from fencing primarily, as well as some landscape up there.
And what kind of, I guess, materials was fencing? Is that part of our, is that a recall, like some kind of standard?
I believe it's part of the drawings. It was a wood privacy fence.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, it would be a continuation of that fence.
Okay.
Stylistically.
Sure, and New Tech also has like some trees in there too, behind. Okay, thank you.
That was, that was part of what we were trying to do is maintain that sense of uniformity along there.
So each of the units has an overhead door in the rear, except for the two units that are accessed by the internal corridor? So is, is, are they gonna be finished in, inside as four individual units? Or do you have any of the units leased up, or kind of where are you at in that process?
So for purposes of this discussion, we are gray-boxing it such that the units can be subdivided. That one particular breakpoint where we do have the wall is a very natural breakpoint that makes it easier to build it, but everything else is up to if a tenant wants more space or less space. We can modify the walls to begin that, but Dave can speak more to the interest of the community of people who want to lease.
Yeah, we've had, well, when I was here last, about a month ago, I mentioned that the first building that we designed that got approved, and it, we actually listed on MLS, we had a lot of interest from contractors to, you know, insurance, office, you know, service businesses. And so we've gone through that list, and we've been reaching out to some people. There's still a lot of interest on those folks that reached out a few years ago. Karate Studio is, is super interested. We have someone that wants to do like salon suites, you know, insurance. So there's like a, a large range of, of, of people that are very interested in the site.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise, it is a discussing consider.
I guess I would move approval of the request from David Zilke for approval of a site plan for an eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six square foot multi-tenant commercial building to be located at six forty Cork Crossing.
With conditions, is that? I would second.
With conditions.
Yep, and I would second that.
So there's a motion by Severson and a second by Murphy. Any more discussion on this?
Just to note, the conditions in my report also reference the conditions from Stray Anne's previous report. That didn't really change because these are mostly cosmetic issues.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you for coming and staying.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, reports from village officers, village attorney.
Nothing for me.
Communication and miscellaneous business. We have the consider the approval of vouchers. Bill's list is in the agenda.
I would make the motion to approve the vouchers as presented. Second?
There's a motion by Murphy and a second by Severson. Ladies are doing all the work tonight. Although, any discussion or any comments, questions on the bills?
I know.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Correspondence, there were several emails about the sports complex that we all received. There was an email about traffic in the Damascus area, and then also an email in favor of the Shady Grove Park that was discussed tonight. Does anyone else have any other correspondence they'd like to highlight? Upcoming community events, community night, yes, in the back.
Community Night Out is this Wednesday. As a member of the Community Night Out Committee, we invite everyone. It is a free event that will be starting at five PM. We have two food trucks that are signed up, ready to go. We have thirty-plus organizations/businesses that'll be there presenting. We will then have two helicopters that are landing. The Blackhawk will be back, and then also MedFlight. All first responders, fire EMS ourselves. The village will be there, so the weather is looking to be perfect. It's only supposed to be about seventy-four and partly cloudy, so it won't be too hot. And then we will finish off the evening with a movie on the rugby field. We will be playing Moana Two. Free popcorn for that, so please bring down your families, friends and all community members so we can celebrate Cottage Grove.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Anyone else have any other community events?
Taste of Cottage Grove is the following evening, so.
Then there's the car show, and then there's Music in the Grove the next week.
Yes, Music in the Grove.
There's gonna be back-to-school things, so everyone should use caution as kiddos start back walking to school and buses and our crossing guards will be out helping everyone cross the street safely, so lots of activity.
Yes, that time of year again. But yeah, Music in the Grove, the Taylor Swift Experience is going to be on August twenty eighth, and I think the social media has been on point, if I didn't say so myself. So yeah, lots of fun, exciting things happening all before school starts. And then with the start of school, yes, please be careful with all of the kids riding their bikes and taking over the community. Future agenda items, we have the landowner annexation, the service providers coming back, election equipment coming, agreement with the fire department. Does anyone else have any items they'd like to see at the September, Tuesday, September second meeting?
Financial management plan will come for approval after recommendation from Budget Review tomorrow. There are some components to the soft cost of the police stations that I'm at least gonna bring forward to the board. There's opportunity to buy things at twenty twenty-five cost, supposed to twenty twenty-six cost. So there's some savings that, as I've been kind of truing up some of those costs, would at least like to put in front of the board. I believe Coil South will probably be too early by September second, but that is something that will be on an upcoming agree, and that again is to kind of lay out the terms. That was kind of tentatively discussed at last board meeting. And I'm sure other things will come up.
Maybe not as many things as this agenda.
So I didn't see, but it's confirmed, next meeting is Tuesday, September the second. So I didn't see, but it's confirmed, next meeting is Tuesday, September the 2nd, okay?
Yep. Alright, so 11 and 12 are closed sessions. Can I do one motion, or does it have to be repeated?
You can include both of them, just summarize, like, I guess, so we're going to-
Alright, so we're gonna enter into closed session for the, regarding the possible acquisition of the property located at 616 North Main Street, as discussed in Item 7C. And then also, the, to discuss a negotiating strategy regarding property acquisition within TID 9, as discussed in Item 6F. So I'll make a motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 print 1 print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
I would second.
Roll call votes.
Benzo?
Aye.
Dahl?
Aye.
Kel Nelson?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
And Stoa?